This conference will now be recorded.
So I will call the meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance, please. Everyone rise. Aye. So first, I just want to welcome Chris back. He was was out for a little bit sick and we've got another staff member of Georgia, one of our business administrators who is still recovering from COVID. So I just wanted to wish her a speedy recovery. I will start with roll call. We've got, so I see Bill is Supervisor Guy is online. We'll get his approval of for special consideration in just a minute. We've got Supervisor Welsh, Supervisor Tinkle, Supervisor Banks, Supervisor Geppert. We've got District Manager and Business Manager in attendance. And District Council is here as well. I would imagine we've got touch check on.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Stephen. All right, we will jump into public comments. Chris?
We have one request to address Judy Peake Eagle Point Circle. The topic is?
I just want to thank the board. My name is Judy Peake Eagle Point Circle. I just want to say thank you to all of you for all the work you've done to get this budget done. We don't always get all everything we want, but that's called compromise. And kudos to each and every one of you. Y'all did a great job. And moving forward, I just know it's going to work out and things are going to get accomplished. I am proud to live in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
To each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's always nice to get a thank you every once in a while. So that's it, Chris. We just have one. Anyone online?
Anyone online like to chat in or make a comment?
I do need a motion for Bill to spate virtually due to special circumstances. Motion a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great.
Thank you.
Yep. So we'll move into staff reports. Tony, we will start with. Oh, we, okay, yep. So we wanted to take a little bit of time today and recognize our staff and all the hard work they do day in and day out and year over year. So we have some special recognition for those staff members that have hit certain tenure pinnacles. And Laura, I will hand it over to you and you can make the announcements and deliver those that those who are in attendance.
There's only one person missing, I believe. First, we have Mary. So that you can all see that we made, we got plaques for everybody that says presented to and has their name. It says in recognition of your however many years of outstanding service to the Gateway Services District and it has 2021 at the bottom.
And just so we know, can you, can you, if you don't mind, will you, will you just let us know what is Mary your?
I was, she's been here for 16 years.
16 years. Mary has the highest tenure. If you, if you don't know who Mary is, you haven't lived in this community longer than two weeks. So Mary, thank you so much for all your contribution. We really appreciate it.
Next is Al. She's not, she is not here today, but she had 14 years back in March was her anniversary. So she had 14 years with the district.
Congratulations to Al as well.
Next is Julie. Julie Fitz, our receptionist. She does, she's the one who handles, she's our frontline, our main contact. She does our AP and has other people coming in the window. She's been here seven years. She just had her anniversary in June.
Congratulations.
All right, next is Kenny. Everybody knows Kenny. Kenny, Kenny was here actually not quite six years. His anniversary is actually done the 16th, our next board meeting, September 16th will be six years for Kenny.
It's only been six years? He does feel like 20. Congratulations, Kenny.
Next up is Leslie. She had five years with us as of May 16th.
Congratulations.
And next is our fearless leader, Chris, who had five years with us as of June 20th.
Congratulations.
And Vicki, who just hit her five years with us on August 22nd.
And Vicki loved us so much. She left for a short amount of time and came back.
Came back.
In my, we call that a boomerang hire. So.
Last but not certainly least is Isaac, who has four years with us as of April 19th. So these plaques were for everybody who had three years.
Congratulations, Isaac. And again, just from the board's perspective, just thank you all for everything that you do. I know we probably don't give you enough thanks and this is just a small token of your tenure and our appreciation for everything you do. The extra hours that you put in, the days that you come in when you're on call. So again, just thank you all very much.
And I mentioned especially a lot of the staff, they do get some recognition and when we hire Isaac. How much did you know about utilities?
I really know a whole lot.
Yeah, after four years, so.
And it was the hard way.
That's good. Appreciate it. And I do say too, and you know, and Isaac's a good example as long as well as everyone else, just continue to grow and roll. And taking on additional certifications and just enhancing your, your knowledge base in the areas that you're in. So again, thank you all. Okay, we good?
Yep.
Okay. And this is something we're going to start doing annually. We'll do recognitions when we hit certain milestones. So we want to try to institute more recognition for staff. I know that there's.
My goal is to do them as they come up.
Yeah, as they, yeah.
As people achieve their anniversary.
Awesome. You are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're not going to stay for the next three hours for us to go? No.
All right.
Let's don't say we did. Some truth.
He'd rather be in the rain.
Yeah, I'd rather worry the rain.
Okay, so Tony back, we'll start with your update.
Just briefly, I appreciate Chris's help on this. Emails this week I pulled back up, I got sidetracked, emails to Tom Garlick and Don Garrett. Tom's the attorney for the Gateway Golf Club and Don Garrett's sort of the principal investor on that water withdrawal agreement. Just to, and Chris helped draft a little email to them to explain why we need to have a license agreement to split the permits out, be no cost. And so I think we're going to have a sign, final agreement before the board, September 16th. That's what we shoot for.
Who's the attorney?
Tom Garlick. I've known Tom, Tom's somewhere retired. He's was in Naples. He's up in the Finger Lakes in Rochester area now. He's from, he and I went to the same high school, but about 10 years apart. Hard to believe, small world. But pardon?
I said, I didn't know who he was, but I figured it'd be somebody in Naples with Garrett.
Yeah, he and Tom, Don have known each other a long time, apparently. In fact, Don Garrett built our building back 21 years ago. So that should be on the board agenda for the 16th, I think. Chris outlined a nice explanation that I sent on to them that convinced them of the wisdom of entering to the agreement to separate out the permits. Anything else, Chris, you want to add to that or?
No, we've been working with them for a while and yeah, we've been kind of tasked with doing a lot of reporting because even though it's our permit, they're the ones doing the pumpage and they're the ones. So it does take a staff burden off us on that sampling and reporting and puts that responsibility on them.
Yeah. So again, now we're coming down to 16th. On the C5 issue, I think it's not really my bellywork. I think it's more Stephen and Brian and or Chris's. Stephen, are you on the phone? Do you want to report back as to what this issue about the stormwater pipe under tree line, whether it's been cleared or not? And Stephen, if you could advise the board what you reviewed and what you were provided and Ryan may want to have some comments. And then there's a question about a junction box that can't be found, if you can explain that.
Sure, yeah. So Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yep. So at the last board meeting, we were talking about the plat for C5 and we talked about holding it until the storm pipe connecting C5 to the rest of Pelican Preserve was cleaned. Lennar agreed to, to go ahead and clean that. They're the ones that videotaped it and found that it was dirty. And then, once we found that out, we asked them to clean it. They provided a video to me yesterday for review. I think he had to recopy. So I'm not sure if the other two ended up at Gateway, but anyways, we reviewed it and they did clean the portion of the pipe that was underneath the tree line. They were not able to locate in the field, the junction box that's in the golf course. So they were not able to clean that portion, but the portion from the lake in Pelican Preserve to the right away tree line was the least dirty. It was like 20 to 30%. And I think Gateway really needs to go out there and locate it and clean it, you know, when they get a chance to. At this point, I don't think there's any reason to hold up that plat anymore.
What, Stephen, what's the, is the junction box a bump up or is it just an access box for changing grade?
It's, it's not.
It's a, it's a changing direction. So it's just a junction box that connects the two storm pipes because it's at like kind of an angle. So it just ties the pipe together.
Anybody got a metal detector? Cause I bet it's two feet underground.
Oh, it's a lot more than that. It's a lot more than that. Anyway, I've talked to the golf course superintendent, Jim Tuerba. If we need access in the future, they will provide access to us and they'll work around with. More than satisfied that, that Lennar has lived up to their obligations and I'm ready.
Did we find out, is that segment from the west side to the east side ours or theirs?
From the west side of tree line.
Yes.
Matter of fact, all of tree line.
All the pipe under tree line is right away is ours.
On the east side is ours and on the west side to C5 itself is theirs.
Under the road is what?
Under the road is ours because we've got all the other ones. Now, I don't know who actually is responsible for maintaining it, but we have assumed that duty. Whether it's actually the city or not, I guess that was a legal question. But we're satisfied they're all clean right now. We're good to go. I think the appropriate action would be done for the releasing of the plat. Board approved the execution, releasing of the plat for C5 to the developer. Yeah, I'll make that motion.
And do we have that?
That was last, last.
We, we took care of it. I have.
The follow up from last?
Yeah, I have the plat. It's just, I was just waiting to release it.
Second.
So we have a motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
A new item next. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Guy, you're muted on your end for the vote. Okay.
An item that, an email I received last on the 24th, just opened it up today, forwarded it on. We'll have a discussion at the next board meeting. Lee Health has purchased a building on Gateway Boulevard for $7 million. It's the building that's just north of Commerce Lake Shrive, the one outlined in blue.
Old Sony.
Oh, the old Sony building. And that, their closing occurred in August.
Is this going to be another freebie on taxes?
That's the request to, and the amount of the assessments is I think $22,000.
That's what I saw. Yeah.
For this year. So we'll have that discussion at the next board meeting. Right now, it's indicated as being for.
Is that prorated?
No, well, the new assessments don't start until this upcoming fiscal year. So they're talking about from August of this year forward, which would mean no payments for the fiscal year 21, 22.
But 21 is already been paid.
Correct.
So they're not asking for a reverse.
They've not asked for that and I'd say no.
Yeah, I, no.
But anyway, so it's indicated as being for ambulatory facility management, whatever that means. So I'll make some more rain scorers.
It's, it's to cure wrecks at the roundabouts.
So we're not, it's not really clear what the.
I'll find out. Last time we had, going back and forth with Mark Ebelini, who were they going to lease it to somebody else who's going to be a non-houseful use?
But they're going to argue the same argument that it's.
And I'll, and what I'll do, I'll look at the law and see and update it between that time and today to see what the issues are. But that came in last week. And we're educating, we're in there, we're anticipating they're going to ask for us to waive their taxes. To indicate no assessments or can be levied. For example, the property is not. Why would we ever do that? Case law.
We had to do that over on Commerce or West Lakes Drive also. That whole big building complex, we had to waive that for them there also. They get tax exemption.
Or not, not exempt, it's not a tax exemption, but exempt from that levying of assessment if it's for the governmental purpose in this case. That's. But you said it was Lee Health. That's a governmental, that's a special district, Lee Health. It's a, it's a special. It's not the Lee Memorial Health System. Lee Memorial Health System is Lee Health. And that's the government? The government, yes.
Yeah, it's, don't, don't go down. All you're going to do is bring up bad vibes.
Okay. It, this is an aside, they don't have any tax lien power. They get all their money from the revenues from operating the facilities. Well, I know, I get the bills.
Yeah.
And they have sovereign immunity, like you all have sovereign immunity. So that'll, again, we'll provide a memo and recommendation to the board at the next board meeting. One of the other issues, and this is more under, I think I'll leave it for Steve. The C5 issue, Fredo, excuse me, the Fredo issue, I'll leave that for Steve to adjust when he gets to it. And that's all I have for it. Tony, the road transfer for Palazzo, where does that stand right now? Is that the done deal or? No, I think, do we have a task authorization to Tetra Tech to do the survey of the road?
Yeah, so Stephen should be familiar with that. The evaluation of the Palazzo infrastructure.
Hey guys, Stephen here again. So we did our site visit and we're just going to draft a memo and get that to you to look at and hopefully have it on the, for the agenda of the next meeting.
Got a brief summary of what it's going to tell us?
There is no major issues out there, just some minor painting, striping for the crosswalks and repairing a section of the valley gutter.
Okay, one more, you have the written report.
My plan is to have it submitted by Tuesday or Wednesday at the latest for inclusion with the meeting book.
Okay, so next meeting. And Stephen, to your knowledge, in your memorandum, will you also advise or find that the roadway meets Lee County standards for I think for public roads? I mean, look at the statute. I'll send the language in the statute because that's what the district can own and maintain.
Okay, yep.
And then the.
There was. Yeah.
The survey, do we even have that status or?
Yeah. So do you just need like a sketch and boundary description of the infrastructure, like the actual like road from edge of curb to curb? Is that what you're looking for?
We need a legal description of the width of the right of way minus those parking areas. And I guess, I guess it would be back of curb. Brian, have you been out there and seen it or Bob? It's curb to curb. Curb to curb. Are there any sidewalks? Parking structures are beyond the. Back of curb.
There is sidewalk out there, but it, some of it meanders away from the road and goes behind their off street parking. It's not consistent. So it's not, I don't, I don't know. Do you guys want any of the sidewalk? Are they even trying to give away the sidewalk?
Just the road as far as I know.
I mean, I was under the assumption it was just going to be the road and you know, for me, that also means the valley gutters. So that's all we were looking at.
Valley gutter is the actual.
Correct.
Okay, that's what we want. Okay. And on Pelican Reserve also, Steven Damsick, Paul McMichael, the planner, and I had a conversation the other day about setting up a meeting with the city staff to try to understand the background of the city staff's comments to the initial comments to the DRI amendment application. They were rather harsh.
You mean the connector road?
Yeah. It was, it, rather harsh. It seems as if there might be some feelings from way back when that are surfacing in the form of staff comments, but we're going to have that conversation. Staff of the city? Staff of the city, yes.
It's, they're not even on point of what they're talking about.
Yeah, if you've seen those, yeah. In fact, if you want me to, I can distribute them to the board because Chris, I don't think the board has seen that to my knowledge. And I don't know the rest of the world. Yeah, I haven't seen anything negative. Everything's been positive. We'll send them around, but also hopefully we'll have a positive meeting with the staff to understand or also correct them and address some various issues that they raised in their, in their responses.
Sounds like somebody's feelings got hurt years ago.
Okay, am I correct in assuming we're against the time deadline on this, Tony? When Lennar is finished and if they have to make that land back into vegetative state? I'm not sure when that time is. I mean, I, I haven't had those discussions with Nicole, but I think then someone had discussions with her in the past. I mean, we've been talking about this since last November.
Yeah, well, there's been, vehicles are still using it, so it still must be under construction. So it meets the definition.
Well, it is because Casella hasn't finished, but they're real close. I mean, they're going to finish probably this quarter.
Well, we're already three months past what was going to be, so.
Yeah, I'll follow up and find out if they have any meeting or conference call dates or meeting dates yet. We had the call a few days ago. But that's, and I'll send around the comments from the staff. The reason I brought up is I just don't want to get to the point where a decision hasn't been made and Lennar is finished with their obligations to restore it. Even if they restore it, we something to go back later and dig it up and put it in a road. But let's not let the timeline maybe wrestle us back us into the corner. Yeah, I see Russell's here. Speaking in the corner, yeah. We're talking about the C5 route, not C5.
Cross.
Right, right. No, this is the access construction road. Yeah, that's the Prado route. Right, that's the Prado route.
And what do you want to know? I can't get on the tail end of the question of the discussion.
When are you going to be done such that you have a commitment to either convert that land back to raw land or convert it over to us?
Probably six months.
Six months more? Okay.
Plenty of time.
We can breathe now.
We ought to figure out what the city is going to do about that.
It'll take six months to get past what's going on downtown.
Yeah, that was, again, the tenor was interesting of the staff memo. Yeah, I think it's history.
Glad I wasn't on the other end of the line.
Oh, well, that was a memo.
It's bullshit. It's ridiculous.
That's all I have. Those are questions of the board.
Any thing for Tony?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Okay, Stephen.
Yeah, there is one.
Go ahead.
This, this came up at the ribbon cutting the other day when I was talking to a couple of the commissioners. Where are we on the POAs? This is going to, in fact, it packs one now and it's going to pack the other shortly. The POAs of Fairway Lakes Office Park and the old.
Town.
No, the one down there on Commerce. What was the name of that POA? Was it by Daniels Preserve?
There are two of them, I know.
There's two. Anyway, what's the status of those for us to be able to get back with the county and try to figure out what we're going to do with this stuff?
Yeah, I really haven't really moved forward on that where I can go back, resurrect those files and move forward about the district then trying to maybe even go into court to get a trustee appointed.
Yeah, because somehow, some way, we need to get that Commerce Lake Road from the point of where it currently stops that we gave to the county to give to the county the rest of the way to Daniels. I mean, it only makes sense. And as, as we were discussing at the ribbon cutting is, is that this, this is a mess. We, we got to go chase down some ex-director on that POA and I've talked to one of them in both POAs and they're scared to death to sign off on it. And I, I mean, would somebody go shoot you? What, what's the harm? They just don't want to sign off on it.
Who have you talked to? Maybe I can contact them.
I can't even pronounce his name. Dvorak?
Oh, okay.
Brian Dvorak.
So he lives in Gateway.
Yeah, who's that? Yeah.
Well, maybe you and I can talk something like this because what we might be able to do is just, I'll call it a lawsuit where you appoint the trustee and he can be the trustee, then he gets the protection of being the trustee.
We need to get these.
We'll talk about a strategy to get that done.
We got to get this done.
And I think we need to, you know, continue to look at if, if the responsible parties are not responsive or whatever. I guess going down the trustee appointment, is that the last straw or is there?
That'd be the last straw, I think. And again, and that's the only other alternative that you have. If nobody's willing to sign a deed. The officers and directors at the time of dissolution have the ability to sign a deed.
I mean, is it as simple as drafting up some type of legal document for those?
To sign.
Yeah, to say, look, we are absolving you from any.
Yeah.
Well.
It's about that simple.
Except that we have sovereign immunity and the Attorney General has advised that we can't extend the waiver of sovereign immunity that's in the statute. So arguably, it might be an argument that we could say, except to the extent.
You're talking about sovereign immunity for them being protected against somebody coming after us?
Say, the concept is the district's going to indemnify and hold harm, hold them harmless from the deed and from the conveyance. The district can't totally do that because then you're extending the waiver of sovereign immunity.
That's what I meant.
The only legislature can do that. So arguably, we could craft an agreement saying, you know, to extend authorized by law and without waiving or extending the waiver of sovereign immunity, we agree to indemnify and hold you harmless from any actions that can occur. That might be possible. I mean, I think we could do that.
Yeah, with the combination of the Worthington and the microbrewery development down there, we need to clean that up to be able to hand that over to the county.
Well, and again, if it's one of those people like Brian, if he's amenable to that, saying, hey, to the extent we're authorized by law, we will hold you harmless. We can't guarantee that we, you know, we, you know, has a phrase detection.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's a, it's a, it's an awkward situation. And how is the county doing with the roundabout? Are they changing the footprint? Because they have the same issue with the part with the roundabout. We hear it, don't they, during Gateway?
Tony, what they did, they did, they actually did a condemnation and took the money and put it in the escrow under the account in case somebody ever shows up and wants to claim.
Oh, no getting. So they had to name some party to get the title. Interesting.
Well, they did. And like I said, they took the, the cost figure and put the money in escrow and said, if you ever want to come claim it, but otherwise there's the money.
Do you have a copy of that order or the case?
No, I can get one though.
Yeah, send it to me if you could. I appreciate it. I'll check the.
That was an interesting approach.
And Tony, I had one other thing. Yes. I saw an email from you this week regarding Pond 36. Yes. And the two pipe sections that are missing, mitered end sections are short of the pond. Yes. And it seemed to be that you were questioning whether RWA is somewhat culpable since they certified ASBILs that weren't there. Well, there are, there are record drawings that reflect, these are the record drawings. I mean, they were ready. I feel like a setup man. Feel like a setup man. Well, I try to anticipate, I don't like stump the staff kind of stuff. I try to anticipate. These were from, I think Stephen sent these around and because the yellow highlighting, I think, was Stephen's. And they're the record drawings from RWA back in August of, excuse me, June of 2011 that show the two mitered end sections. And those are the two that are missing. Is that correct? That is correct. Stephen?
Those are the two that we found when the water was low. I mean, there may be others, but me and Brian were out there with another staff member from Gateway and we were investigating an address that Bob provided and we found the one that he had mentioned, there's a massive boulder on top of it. That's a good landmark. And then we found another one just down the length, the lake bank that was also incorrectly installed.
What's the condition?
There may be more. I, we just, it's hard to tell with the water being so high.
We know these, these are the two that we want to get fixed. I guess, Stephen, on the record drawings, it even has the elevation.
Yeah, invert.
Yeah.
That's, that's kind of incriminating there. But what did you shoot if you had, didn't have, if it wasn't there?
In other words, Stephen, you're saying those pipes in yellow are not in existence. I mean, that, those structures do not exist.
So it calls out a structure, a flared end section. So what's actually in the field is just a concrete pipe with no flared end section on it, similar to like a mitered end section. It's just missing that last piece and probably a stick of pipe to really get it out away from the lake bank.
A typical flared in section is a, like a fitting as opposed to a mitered in section.
Well, our typical mitered end sections extend out into the water.
They're not, the mitered in section usually goes, the pipe goes out in its diameter and then is shaved off. A flared in section is a pipe that starts at the diameter of where it's ending and then it angles out. That's a flared in section. That one shows a flared in section, not a mitered in section. There's a big difference.
Correct.
Lot of money.
And so Stephen, are you saying that basically what we have today, we've identified two potential areas where the, the ASBILs do not, do not line up, but there could be potential for more, but we cannot assess that because of the high water level.
Correct.
Stephen, it shows on the drawing 170 feet from the manhole that's at the road out. Has anybody went out there and taped it to see how far out in the water this in section or this? Into the pipe?
It's not in the water. That's the problem.
You what?
It's not in the water. Doesn't get that far.
Well, then why don't we see it then? I thought you just said the water level doesn't allow us to see it.
Other, other, other problems if they exist. This one we can.
So we were out there in like April and the water was really low and we could actually see the pipe that was in the lake bank. I mean, we were standing pretty much on top of the pipe. It's in the lake bank and it's starting to like kind of fill in a little bit. It needs to be extended out at least one stick of pipe and then have the flared end section, in section installed.
But there was no flared in section on it as you saw it.
Correct. It's just a plain end piece of pipe.
So it's not mitered, there's not a flared in section. So. So it's not mitered, there's not a flared in section. So it is really just a pipe.
And as I understand it, and I see Russell's here too, but Lennar says we signed off and it's ours? Is that kind of where we're at?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, Tony, so then we go after RWA.
Yeah, all right. Well, and the issue is it's over ten years old. There's a, we've posed effects, uh, and it's years. It's from the time of turnover and.
And we're just accepting this ten years later?
No, this was accepted. I kept, I'm trying to find all the documents when it was accepted. Stephen, were you able to find those?
No, I got your request earlier today. I need to research our very old files. That was probably like seven years ago, maybe six years ago.
Yeah, I think the argument by Russell's, let's put words in Russell's mouth or Charles Mann's mouth that he was here is that y'all should have noticed it at the time you took the turnover.
Paybacks are hell.
Uh, actually, what I would say is I don't know anything about it just because it was a long time ago.
That's a good start.
For the acquisition. So, uh, you know, I'm not familiar with the circumstance. Uh, but I will say, and I don't want to express a position on it, I said I don't want to speak for the company, but it will be helpful to get into it. I'll do whatever I can.
Yeah. Main thing we need is a checkbook.
That's why I said the first thing about nothing.
So the existing, the existing Matarita, uh, development bonds would not be a source for us to. I mean, clearly this hasn't been, it wasn't built to construct a defect from whatever perspective.
I, I guess the question is, is this Matarita Phase One?
Yeah.
Stephen, is it Solaro?
Yeah, that is correct.
It's Phase One.
Matarita Phase One.
And, and the, the bonds that we're talking about are the bonds in favor of the district for construction of infrastructure.
This is Matarita. This is Matarita on this.
Are the Matarita bonds still outstanding? The Matarita one?
I have to look and see. I, I thought those bonds were returned.
I thought so. That was a while back, yeah.
Yeah.
Who?
So maybe Matarita Phase Four then that outstanding. I don't know.
Someone initiated a document for our consideration at the last meeting. It didn't identify Matarita one, two, three. It says Matarita on, okay.
Is.
Which Matarita was that, Chris? You think it was three or two?
Yeah, if I look at the bomb and it's showing the expiration date, one twenty-nine, twenty-two for Matarita.
So we still got a little time.
Okay, if it's Matarita Phase One, yes, we still have time to make a claim on the bond, yes.
I, I could see the issue of a statute on the timing for the contractor that didn't do the work. But the falsification of a document by the engineer, I was always told in my life, there is, when you do something wrong, there is no statute limitation.
No, that's incorrect when it comes to if you want to try to obtain damages, it's, it's clear. It's a ten-year, it's a statute of reposed.
But against the engineer or the contractor?
Well, it's the, it's a, it's a statute of reposed.
That still filed a claim against the engineer's insurance claim.
And they would deny it saying both the statute limitations and the statute of reposed require it. Now, whether or not the board wants to file a.
Well, this was discovered earlier this year, much earlier.
If, if the engineering.
February or March of this year.
The engineering firm was doing worse here. Let them toe the line. I, I don't put up with this kind of stuff. Never did.
I think we should pursue, at least if, if RWA is the responsible party.
Bad advertisement they're going to get out of it, they wish they'd put the deal, had done it right.
Well, I mean, here, here's the difficulty with it. I understand what y'all are saying.
That's before we give you the big bucks for it.
Well, you'd have to file a, a claim saying it's a construction defect. If you try to understand, and, and the problem again is the ten years and the four years from the statute of limitations. This was, the record drawing date is June sixth of two thousand and eleven.
Okay, and we reported it well before June sixth of twenty twenty-one.
But it was not provided to the engineering firm prior to that time, nor was a lawsuit filed prior to that time.
You know, we notified, at that time, we were notifying WCI or Lennar.
Well.
Who has to tell the?
It's a formal notification process of a construction defect that has to take place. It's called chapter five fifty-eight. And that's what should have been, needed to have been sent to the extent that you can even try to assert a claim. And then if they say, forget about it, then you have to sue them to try to get the.
So when it was brought up here, you didn't initiate that and maybe in hindsight you should have?
I didn't know when the defect occurred and if it was requiring.
That was my question.
My, my deal is file, file suit against them and let them run a while. Let them run.
How can we just?
They screwed up. This is, this isn't the first time this has happened here in this community. And every time we turn and look the other way and have a reason not to go after somebody. I go with what some of the, the residents have said. When you have somebody that did something like this, go after them. If they, we come back and they say they got away, then we'll make sure that everybody in the community knows they got away with it.
It's kind of like insurance. It ensures everything but what happens. I'm sorry? It's kind of like buying insurance. Every time I make a claim, I'm insured for everything but what happened.
Everything but what happened.
Everything but happened.
Yeah, and I'll look to see when I was first advised that this was an issue.
Okay.
So just, you know, the next four minutes, can you just come back with your recommendation options and what our choices are?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so moving on, uh, district engineer, Stephen, what do you have for us?
I, I don't have anything else. Just had C five and we covered that pretty thoroughly. So unless you have questions for me, I'll, uh, I'll pass.
Uh, the homes in Prado, I think there was fourteen of them. I could be wrong. Did not conform to the permit criteria manual, manual uh, relevant to, uh, rear yard drainage of drains, of downspouts. Scott Connell's issued a couple of reports and followed up. We've notified WCI for over two and a half years, three years, or Lennar. And as far as I know, building construction is finished in Prado and these yard drains still have not been hooked up. Who makes them do it? Prado's us. This is in the product.
I don't have.
Some of the early homes, they were supposed to put in, they did it, you know, for like ninety-eight percent of the homes, but there's still some that weren't done.
Is this GHD drainage or Prado?
This is downspout gutter.
I know, but I don't think that, that our customer care department is working with the Prado Association. I think that drainage is on association property, not GSD property.
It is on homeowner's property.
Yeah, but I think that the governing agency over that property that is working with our customer care department to get it resolved is the Prado Homeowners Association.
Okay, we've been at this for three years. I just need somebody to say they're going to do it.
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, and I can, I'll come back to the next meeting and tell you what's going on.
Appreciate it.
I just know that we have had field visits out there very recently and are getting proposals and things to remedy things that are associated with the Prado Homeowners Association. We looked specifically to see if they were GSD owned pipes or not, and they weren't. They were all owned by the Prado Association. So we worked with that entity to try to resolve.
Well, typically we don't take anything less than a fifteen inch.
If you put it in in order to comply with the permit criteria manual, who would govern that? Would it still be the Prado homeowners? I don't think the homeowners are.
I would think, I think what we're going with is, is, uh, on whose property it sits.
So it's on the resident's property.
Property, it's got to be the association because the association has the easements to, to allow somebody to access that. That's my impression.
And you may well be right. I don't know that the homeowner association even knows about this issue.
Oh, I think they do.
This was a ponds issue, but okay. We're making progress. That's all I wanted.
And maybe I'll come back next week and collect a shot on this more information. But that's why I'm, oh, they are working on that because I have been asked to help looking to who owns those pipes.
Okay.
On whose property. They said we had an exhibit done to show what was where and.
That, that makes sense.
So Bob, maybe if you can work with Chris, we'll make sure that the homeowner association is aware and if there's progress and if we can.
Yeah, Bill Sorico is the gentleman.
How many, how many lots are you talking about?
Forty to fifteen. I mean, the overwhelming majority were done properly, but they never went back to the early ones.
And then these what, six inch pipes or four?
Uh, they should be six. I don't know what they are. There should be six. And then they come down, they take the downspout right at where it hits the ground and you.
Wyatt.
Put the, the pipe name Wyatt and then channel it back to the pond. It's only affecting homes on ponds. Okay.
And Stephen, I have, if I could get an update too, I know that you and Brian were going through a punch list for, uh, Matarita Phase Four for the conveyance and turnover. And, uh.
Yeah.
So all those have been satisfied or where are you at with that?
Everything I've seen looks good. I just need to draft a, a letter saying, saying something to the effect that we're, we're happy with everything and it can be approved for turnover. That should be on the next agenda.
Okay, so we'll be looking for that letter from you the first of the week to include in the, uh, agenda item. And then we'll also be bringing back, we do have four bonds that we've been looking at the last couple of months. Pelican Preserve, Solaro, um, eighty-one hundred and sixty-four dollars. Um, that bond, three-year maintenance bond basically expired October thirty-first, twenty twenty. We have Pelican Preserve Carina or the Matt Two A, and, uh, that was the same thing. There's, uh, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in that bond amount. Um, but it was ready for release, the three-year maintenance period, ten thirty-one, twenty twenty. And then we have, uh, Estoya. It was issued in twenty eighteen and then it's the three-year maintenance period ended June sixth, twenty twenty-one. And that's two hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. And we'll just get, have to get a final sign off from the engineer and then, um, do our inspections. But we'll plan on bringing those back on the sixteenth.
Do we know who's responsible for relocating those light bulbs? Ones that are in the person's driveways.
I guess the question is, it appears that they are in a public utility easement and outside the right of way based upon the pictometry for leaking. I, I think I sent that around. And if that's the case, it's not, if it's not in a district easement, if it's not interfering with the district facility, you know, if it's in a public utility easement where the streetlights can belong because they're FPL, uh, I don't see any recourse.
We can't, common sense, can't get them relocated just because they're in somebody's driveway?
It, it's not in a district easement. It doesn't interfere with the district, district facility.
Sure interferes with backing out of the driveway.
I, I understand, but that's not a district facility or easement. So.
Back to the insurance analogy, everything's covered.
But are you saying it's an FPL problem possible?
FPL and, and the home, and the home, much, look at the pictometry, the, the streetlights are installed before the houses. And then there's a pictometry, I can send that around, pictometry that shows when the house was being built and the streetlights are all there.
So they built the house in the wrong place?
I don't know if it's in the wrong place. That's the city of Fort Myers.
Wrong place.
That's the city of Fort Myers.
Should have had a left end for driveways, didn't have a right.
And, and I, I got involved with this several years ago and talked to the homeowner and looked at, you know, um, relocating the light poles and actually looked at maybe relocating them into the metal cul-de-sac because there wasn't an appropriate place to put it. And, uh, and not meaning to be harsh, but I told the homeowner, it was like this when you bought the home and closed on it? And he said, yes.
That's true.
Okay, so I was like, so you didn't say anything to anybody about it then?
No, they did. They've been complaining about it since they didn't, thinking that any reasonable person that looked at that says that's in the wrong spot.
Key word was reasonable.
OMG.
Okay. Maybe, uh, PIPAC wants to come in and pay to relocate the light poles.
What would it cost to relocate?
Uh, probably, uh, about four thousand dollars a piece.
That's all? That's not outrageous.
Well, we, we looked at it and I.
Russell's got that and it's petty cash. Yeah, that's why I thought. Yeah, I thought maybe you might want to do that. It's a goodwill gesture, since you. This, this is personal, not business.
Um, but that's kind of where we left it and we looked at it, that Florida Power installed it and they're in a public utility easement and and it's been like that, yes, for three years. I saw it and talked to the guy about it and, you know, talked about putting the costs together. And I said, well, you can pay to have it moved. And he's like, well, I'm not paying for it.
Okay, if, uh, we could get a good cost for doing that, how, where you can get a cost.
See, that's they get the feedback. Uh, and in my opinion, since it's not a district issue, public funds cannot be utilized for it because it's a private property owner's issue.
We're going to the cul-de-sac. That's public.
No, it's outside the cul-de-sac. It is currently sitting in a public utility easement outside the district's right of way.
Okay, but we want to put it in a cul-de-sac, which is a district.
But here, the question is whenever you're expending public funds, it has to be for primarily public purpose. You can have an incidental private purpose.
All of our, all of our neighbors are complaining they're going to hit this damn light pole on the driveway.
Or could, could they install one of the cul-de-sac and use the money for that way and then have the homeowner just move the one that's in the driveway?
There you go. Joe?
You're not, you're not.
Reverse engineer.
It's not a bad idea.
So you use the funds to add one of the cul-de-sac and then one of just pays for disconnecting the pole.
Yeah, we got homeowners that need help. That's what we're trying to do.
I guess the question is who paid, did the district pay for any of the streetlights?
No. And that's, that changes the story. That changes the story.
So it sounds like it's a PIPAC issue that's.
Yep.
Need to go to FPL.
Yeah. And maybe if, you know, if.
Chris, are the streetlights owned by FPL or are they leased by?
I think those ones are, um, FPL lights. I'm not sure.
I thought they were community lights because we pay to repaint the poles. We PIPAC.
Well, the question is if you pay.
We paint the poles and we pay the electric bill.
If you pay, if you pay.
The association or the district.
Yeah.
If you pay them two bills, the electric and the maintenance, then they own the pole.
Uh, no, it's one bill because we, they own the pole for us and it's one bill for everything.
I've got ninety.
Flavi, I cannot hear you.
I, uh, he said he's inquiring with FPL.
Great, great.
All right.
Okay, so let's, let's just continue to monitor this, this item.
Yep, thank you.
And, you know, we, hopefully something clear comes to light. Okay, thanks, Stephen. We appreciate it. Uh, moving on to district manager reports.
I really was covering it with the Matarita. Um, another big project going on is the boardwalk in Pelican. That's on schedule and minor change orders to date. Um, so we're pretty satisfied with that. And Tony mentioned that we got a rather ominous comment letter back from one of the city staffers on the DRI that seemed to bring back issues related to a construction road, you know, ten or fifteen years ago. But we'll be meeting with them and just showing it, here's the plan. And on the other side, the engineering contract's been let, the survey contract's been let. Um, we're working to establish power for the gates in there. And the one thing that might surprise you though is the, uh, covenants from Prado, when they finish that up and they're supposed to put the gate in there, it's supposed to be that black aluminum gate like is in there. So we can't just go in and put access gates.
They want swing gates?
No, they want the, it's, yeah, is it called a swing or slide?
Oh, you don't want, no, 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 you don't want the slide.
They don't, well, that's what it looks like. They don't want the arms going up.
And he goes, well, your problem is, is now you just introduced a whole new way of having the access. Because if you had the arms going up and down, you can use like the transponders. You do the other, you're going to have to have a pressure pad or you're going to have to have some type of a, uh, signaling device.
Yeah, we got, we got the, we got the estimates for it, but when you get into that decorative aluminum gate across there that would slide out and work, you're into the low twenties.
Yeah, it gets expensive.
Yeah, it wouldn't be like fifteen thousand for the swing arm gates. It's going to be twenty, you know, every bit of twenty-four thousand dollars in about a six-month lead time. So we're looking at moving forward with that because we're required to have that decorative gate that matches the same gate in the back of the community.
The, the district's only on the, the nut for a fixed, fixed dollar amount and Pelican Reserve is going to pick up the rest. So if that's what they want, we shouldn't have an issue with.
That's what's required.
Well, requirement is also.
It just says, it just says the aluminum, uh.
Black thing, yeah.
But it doesn't say that it has to be a slide or an open gate, either one, either or.
Look at it either way.
But conversations within the community demanded that they have, that was part of the Prado by all of us. But that's an internal thing?
The gate that's on the left hand or the west side would not be the problem on a swing. It'd be the one on the right. Cause it would swing out and would block the way to be able to make the turn and exit out on, it's, it's not wide enough. It won't work.
Or in that landscaping easement, you just have to do a slider.
Slider is about the only way I know you could do it. Yeah.
That's what we're looking at.
Double back to the boardwalk. Is there going to be a meeting out there tomorrow?
Uh, they had it today. I sent you an email. They informed me that the guy was out there and I asked him what time and he goes, oh, we had a team out there today. And I said, well, it's nice that you didn't, um, notify the owner and that's unacceptable.
Yeah, so set up another meeting. We'll do it again.
Yeah, well, and that was more, and they're doing a whole report, but it was really just going out there and looking at the pile.
Well, we enjoyed the last meeting and we had good input.
Yeah.
And I would expect that the same party should have been there this time. And that is House Slickers from the Pods Work Group who's responsible for it.
And that was the message I conveyed and by the time he got.
To whom?
The engineer.
Scavellios, how do you go, whatever his name was.
Say.
City, okay.
Yeah, it's his first name, but he was the one coordinating and he said, well, we had a team out there today. And I just had him go over there and get to work on it, the contractor said, I'll give you a report to the findings.
Okay.
And I said, we still wanted somebody out there, that's why we asked you, but now it's after.
Shoot me an email to that if you would.
I did already.
Contact him and I'll meet him after next week, okay.
That, that's all I have on, on my side.
Hey Laura.
My update's pretty short and sweet, just letting you know that I did post the adopted budget on the website. And I posted a link to it on our Facebook page, so that was done last week. Or actually the Monday after the meeting, because I was off the day after the meeting, so it was out there on the twenty-third. And then there was a request made during, actually several times, and it came up again during either the budget, the public hearing or the other meeting. To possibly do a survey to have later meeting times so that more people can attend. So I just had that on my agenda to bring up for discussion.
We haven't done the survey yet, or?
No, I didn't do anything.
I think it's a good idea, I'm sorry, it's inconvenient with B.
To do what?
To alternate our times or at least give some evening meetings so residents can come.
I have a question.
Yeah, and this, this comes up for every HOA, for every board around times to attend. I have no problem sending the survey out, but I can tell you, as long as I've been doing this and others here have been doing it a long time. Even if you push the meeting back to six o'clock, you're probably still going to have the same number of participants. But I think I'm okay with doing due diligence to see what the, the public opinion is. But I would almost be willing to bet that you're not going to change. And the one thing that I do need to make sure we continue to communicate is accessibility to the meeting itself. Through, through the web, the, the go-to meeting and the meeting being available afterwards. Now, if that doesn't, if you're working. To Laura's point, we talked about this, it doesn't mean that you can just, you know, you can dial in and attend it from your office. That could be frowned upon, but we'll, we'll take a look at it from survey, just see what the survey comes back, at least we're doing our.
Well, we have the survey and even if we just did it on a trial two or three months, if it didn't meet the expectations of the board.
Are we starting?
Volume went up.
Do one meeting at three and then we do one meeting a month that, you know, at just different times.
Trial basis and if we, if we have an influx of people, then it's successful, if we don't, then watch you.
Well, I also like the impacts financially that we'll have because we're going to have to pay staff now for overtime.
That's what I told her as well.
Yeah, because it's not one staff member, we're looking at what now, four at least. Just every meeting and, and then I'm, I'm not opposed to survey. However, when we do the survey, if it's, if it's adoption, if we're giving block hours of option, like AM nine o'clock. Or, you know, or, or the six o'clock, it's, there is going to be a cost for having a staff here after hours.
Mr. Chairman?
At four thirty, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Guy.
Ten years ago, when I was on this board, meetings started at five PM. And no one attended. But we moved it to three and we're still not getting any kind of attendance. And I don't think that they, there's a, there's a time available that's going to make people come to these boring meetings. If they don't want to. And so I think three is the optimum time and I would be willing to listen to other. Opinions, but I don't see any reason to change it, thank you very much.
Could I, could I make a suggestion? I think for the majority of the meetings, a three o'clock would be fine, but I'm thinking if we maybe have like a hot topic on the agenda. If we have something, especially if we have like the oak trees or something where we want more community involved. And maybe we discuss having like a one-off or we possibly have a meeting later, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there.
When, when, when we had, when we had palm trees on the agenda four years, five years ago. The meeting started at three o'clock and the room was packed. It's all depending on what the, the item is.
Agenda specific, okay.
And I think that's, that's probably a good point.
Okay.
Most time it is agenda specific, so, okay, well, we'll do due diligence and we'll see what happens. And do you have something else?
No, that's it, just, just if we're doing the survey, you know, to be aware that if, if it's going to be.
There's a cost involved.
It's going to cost, and it's an overtime cost, so it's not.
All right.
Elle's not here, so Brian, you'll have to do, she has a report in there.
Yeah, this is Elle's monthly report of ponds and conservation areas, kind of end of July and all the way through August. Nothing really out of the ordinary. Good news is, we did get Bob Burleson's report, you should have got it yesterday. I'll bring that to the next board meeting, we're doing a deep dive through it.
Yeah, and I would just encourage, if, if anyone, any of the board members has any direct questions, you know, I'm sure Brian would. Be willing to set up time to talk about any, any items that, that we want to pre-discuss prior to the board meeting.
And we talked about an October.
Workshop.
Workshop, and this would be a great time to incorporate that report into that. Did the Burleson report, when I read it today, I had the impression it was focused primarily on the gateway communities and not Pelican, is that accurate?
Correct, but the water quality applies to everybody.
Well, most of the recommendations apply too, but I mean, he specifically checked ponds over here, he didn't necessarily.
We did check the flowways over there too, but yeah. When you read the water quality issue, there's some things in there we have to change.
Okay.
Because we're not testing properly. What was being tested was outdated and that will be changed with Sanders. We're doing a deep dive when Elle gets back and I'm off tomorrow, but next week we're going to do a deep dive through it. And we have to get some things changed because we're on a watch list, let's just say that when you read it.
By whom?
Uh, the state.
Who?
State of Florida.
Who?
For the water quality.
Who?
FDA era.
Who, who are you talking to? Because I'm going to ask for a second independent report, I thought this report was a piece of crap.
Okay, but.
The gentleman did a deep dive by what somebody told him to say.
Like I say, we'll bring it up next board meeting and you want, I'll ask him to come down and present it.
I have two questions. I have two questions. I'm going to hold this one accountable for this one, yes. Did, did staff had, had, because I know I was very clear and then, and that's something I had mentioned to add. Because I did not want to spend the money if we were not going to go with the recommendation for, or, or, you know, around that way. And it was clear direction, I believe from the board, that staff was to completely stay out of it and only provide documents if they needed. But not, no feedback from staff period, I want to make sure that was that followed.
Elle and I provided what the gentleman needed, especially on the DO side of the house and the orders of element orders and the different things that she had. And we took him around and showed him some areas that he didn't know how to get to or where to go. Other than that, he stayed out of and I specifically told Elle that, let him do his own opinions. So that way it did not come from us, that was strictly Bob and his professional opinion.
I'll take your word, but I'll ask Bob too. I say I'll take your word, but I'll ask Bob when he presents it.
That's fine.
Just want to make sure.
And I will tell him, get him down here for middle of the month if he can do middle of September meeting.
Okay. Thanks, Brian.
Yep.
That might be a meeting you want at night.
Leslie, you're going, Kenny, do you have? You're after.
They're going to flip. Leslie, Victor, Vic, Chili, Billing Manager, just providing some updates, I'll go through some of these kind of quickly. The asset management work order system, we're at the tail end of. Picking our final selection of a company or software. We're right now doing an analysis on whether or not that's a software that we're going to host onsite. A dedicated server or through iCloud.
Just on that piece, there's probably advantages to, to having it cloud-based. At least from a maintenance and, you know, cost and different things, so is that staff's recommendation? Are you, when you're looking at consideration, what are the, some of, some of the kind of critical components that you're evaluating against?
Well, when we're looking at that, mostly it's access. So if there's an emergency, a hurricane, how do we get access? Because it's iCloud, it's going to be web-based. So that's some of the things that we're kind of talking through with our IT company, just give us some options or alternatives. They recommended adding a cellular tower so that if we do lose internet. That we would have the cellular as a backup, but that would all be contingent if Verizon, if their tower has power. So it's mostly in the event of emergency, you know, what would be the best. But alternatively, right now, we would.
Are, are you finding that most applications are relatively comparable as far as, you know, the, the. The functionality that it offers, is it pretty consistent or there, is there a significant difference between one app, application versus another, depending on?
It's pretty, yeah, it's pretty consistent across the board. I would say from what we've seen, it's mostly what's easier for the user, so the user interface.
The user interface, yeah.
Yeah, that seems to be the driving force for us. Because people out in the field have to be able to easily complete work orders and tasks.
Huge driver, in my opinion, anything we should go to, from a monitoring, ticketing, any type of system like that, has to have. An access anywhere, very easy to use, user interface, that's adaptive and scalable.
Yeah, and right now I did request Collier County is using one of the options that we're considering. So I have asked if we can go.
Reach out to them.
Reach out and see how the system works live, I haven't heard back. But the Public Works Department for Collier County is using the one that we're considering.
Okay.
Code Red Mass Notification, I just put this as an update, we have increased our involvement. I think last year we were about seventeen percent, now we're above, a little bit above twenty-five. So I still pushing that quarterly on the Facebook and on our bill and I have reached out and to the cams and property managers as well.
Just out of curiosity, is there any incentive that we might consider? For people to sign up, so if you register for Code Red, is there any, you know, is, is there any consideration that we would have? Whether it's a, you know, twenty-five percent or twenty-five dollars off your, I'm just hypothetically throwing something out there. But, because to me, I think it's really important, the more people we get on Code Red, the, the better ability we have to just overall communicate. Not only in the event of, you know, in a crisis or emergency, so.
I'll look and see what other incentives, other utilities offer for that. I have to, I don't know that we can. I don't know if that's a decision that we can just make and it'd be done, but I'll look into it.
Well, I mean, we, we could definitely make it, it's just a matter of being able to.
You might be able to leverage the president's meeting, bring this up as a topic for them to throw out to their, to their residents. And that might.
Yeah, but I, I do agree with you, we just have to continue, you know, continue to push it.
The next area is emails, this was a change that occurred on, by Microsoft three sixty-five. They administrate our emails. And in May, we found out that they changed their policy on mass bulk mailing. So before May, I could just hit one button and all three thousand, eight hundred emails would go out at once. The policy now restricts that we can only send out emails in batches of three hundred. So the May bill.
That's just a restriction, there's, you can't pay for additional capacity.
No.
Is that per day or per hour?
Per, per.
Per transaction.
Per transaction.
You can just do it ten times in a row.
Right, so for May, it took me three days to send out the bill electronically. Because I had to break it down in batches of three hundred and there's a cycle for each of those, so. We did reach out with a third-party vendor that IT reviewed, so there's a cost of eighty dollars a month. But it's a secure way of sending out those emails and giving us a dedicated IP address. So that our emails appear legitimate and that they can all be sent out at once. Year-end billing reports up.
Before you leave, are, are we doing that?
Yeah, we are.
Okay, that's what I didn't get.
Yeah.
Engage the guy for eighty bucks a month, but now we're doing it.
Right.
Thank you.
I'm working on implementing those settings now, so I hope to have them in the next week or two. Year-end billing reports, I'll plan to work on those after the billing in September and have those out in October. Zenner was out here in August, per my request, because our exceptions continued. At that time, they replaced their cellular collectors that we have on. We have four throughout the community and they were, they were going to discontinue support on 3G technology. And transferred over to LTE. So they, they changed out all four collectors while they were here. And they completed just under three hundred exceptions, but, so we still continue to have the issues with MIUs and the ETRs. So I'll have those year-end, year-to-date numbers as well on my year-end report, I hope to have next week, next month. Lee County Utility Back Billing, so just to give some background on this. Lee County has two meters, all the water comes in with two meters. And we, or I try to reconcile the water coming in versus what goes out on a quarterly basis. So in March, I reviewed that there was a discrepancy with the billing. It wasn't appearing correctly on the bill. So I called Lee County, they advised that the bill was being estimated.
Why?
At that time, they told me they were transitioning towards ETRs or billing system and their billing system. And they couldn't give me an answer.
You said two meters, I thought we had four meters.
No, we have two meters.
We have two down by the elementary school, correct? I thought there was dual meters there, single meter there and a single meter up at the other.
Baseball, yeah.
Do what? We have a metering point down here at the school, all the way down by the elementary school.
By the baseball field?
Yeah, by the baseball fields.
Right.
Thought there was another metering point up here. By Daniel's door, just up toward. Backside of the commercial area, thought there was another set of meters.
Two, that's all.
Just two, okay, when was the last time they were tested?
December two thousand and twenty. This last.
Two thousand, what's?
Twenty twenty, just this December.
What's our contract, twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty, just in December, I did ask for a report of that recalibration.
Yeah, what did it show?
They haven't submitted yet, so I did.
How can they be claiming stuff that goes back beyond a period of twenty twenty if the meter was correct on twenty twenty?
No.
I'll give them, I'll give them the, maybe the quarter for March, but if they tested it on twenty twenty and it was accurate. Them going back beyond that.
Well, it wasn't a meter issue.
Isn't going to fly.
I think what there's, I think what was they saying is there was a time period where they were converting systems or.
That's what they communicated.
Monitoring for that window, not necessarily related to calibration of the meter itself.
Right, it wasn't the meter, it was their billing system. So their billing system wasn't recording the usage.
Estimated billing and then reconciled it after the fact.
My point is, is the date of the recording of the meter that it was accurate, established a meter reading.
Right.
Anything behind that, them trying to recover.
No, they're not. It's just starting January.
It's just starting January.
Right, and it was related to their billing system and how it was recording the usage. So it was off by a dial, their billing system, it wasn't registering. So whoever was processing billing estimated our usage. So we were slightly underestimated through January through May.
You were seeing that we were paying less to them on a monthly or bimonthly basis?
Right.
Okay.
So I reached out in March and then I reached out again in June and they stated, well, we thought it was a register, but it's not. It was tied to the actual billing system.
And this is, Brian brought, brought this up at the budget meeting.
So you, so you physically saw that we were underpaying them and using water. Being billed for less than what we typically paid.
Right, yeah, we go out quarterly, we verify that the read on the meter is tying up with what's in the billing.
Another flag for us was the fact that we had two charges on each of our bills each month. There was one for a meter reading and then there was another charge on there for an adjusted water usage.
Yeah, the billing normally it breaks it all into one.
So what are they trying to do, correct it and say we're going along?
They were adding on the estimate based on, they knew the reading was wrong and then they just, they added on what they assumed, what they thought we were actually using.
So the bulk of the adjustment is because in June, when I requested or pushed the issue to get the billing corrected. They said that going forward, they will manually verify the read and it's entered correctly. And then the June bill in July came and they never billed for anything. So the bulk of the July bill was wrong because they never even billed us for the month of June.
Did they do, do a six-month interim check on the meter? Calibration?
Yeah, well, not six months, they have not done one since December.
It might not be a bad idea to have them do one so that we know that, that we take that out of the picture. That it's not a meter issue.
Yeah, I requested the report, I'll follow up and ask them to see if that's something they will do again and then I'll have that in the next meeting. So that adjustment entry, um Laura's gonna address in her agenda item. Um but I have verified that the billing is caught up. So going forward, it shouldn't be an issue and that this adjustment would appear under this fiscal year.
Leslie and I worked on it together and we both agreed that the amount was correct.
So then there's a very good chance that we were billing our customers.
Correct.
More money than we were paying to them.
Yes.
Of both water and wastewater.
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie, appreciate it. Okay, Kenny, you're up.
We're getting extra revenue in.
Good afternoon, Kenny Hall, uh I'm gonna kind of bounce all over the place here. Um I'm gonna start out with the Hampton Park Utility Suite, uh this one really caught us off guard, definitely caught me off guard. Um we did our normal sweep, we did our sanitary sewer clear, um and we got back to the sewer cleanouts. And we've just about found over, well over a hundred of the six-inch cleanouts were bad. Were rusted in all sorts of dis- disrepair, um and we have spent probably a month just on the cleanouts.
What, what's, what was the problem?
All kinds of trees, roots, um my, uh we'd lift the pad, we'd lift it up to check it and it would be a pile of dirt and there was nothing there. We'd have to dig down, we'd find it, um.
A cleanout, you.
Yeah, it has a cleanout with the pad and 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 we'd lift that, we we'd lift it up and it'd just be dirt. Um we, I'm guessing a lot of it is the lawnmowers hitting them. When they're, they're going over them and they're bumping them and they're bumping them and they're bumping and they follow them the same path and it jars them. And the lift station at the Kentwood Station was was really start and stop and start and stop.
Are these singles or doubles?
Most, majority of them are doubles. So we had to go through and and repair all of these uh cleanouts, uh which turned into a real task. Um we've gotten to the point now that we're done with the cleanouts, um but again, this reinforces our point to go into these communities. On a regular basis and get in there and verify and check and go over these things constantly. Because, like I said, at the Kentwood Station, the master station at uh in Hampton Park, uh the starts and stops were just going really, really high. And the pump times are really, really long.
Pictures of this, because what what we're doing is, we're talking about infiltration influx source.
Yes.
Major.
Yes.
Can we have some pictures to see what this looks like?
Sure, I've got, I've got bunches of them, um and say, the the lift station starts and stops and the runtimes were extending. So that keyed us in, is something's going on and as we've gone through, we've, the 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 I N I has has been greatly reduced. The 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 start and stops were uh about a quarter of the way cut out and the runtimes immediately started to drop because.
Are most of these in the V ditches and swales?
No, they're right, they're right at the property line, up above. Um and what another thing that we found was that if it's on the water main side, the water main running down the road. Um we'd find there were no cleanouts, there was, there was nowhere to actually put them. So if you have a water main and the 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 cleanout comes up under it, and if there's a transformer or a storm drain, there isn't a cleanout. It's down in the ground, but there is no way for us to go in there and verify something is wrong, um so we're.
So there is a T in the line, it's capped and it's capped.
Cause there's no way for it, there's no place to it for it to come up. Yeah, um uh so what we would do is we would take our camera and put it on the customer side and run it down and then verify the uh that that it's there. And you could see where the actual cleanout is, but there's no stack coming up, so there's really no way. But what keyed us in was the skater system at that Kentwood Station was just on and on, on and on, on and on. And as the pump times run, extend, you'd see a rainstorm and then all of a sudden you'd see those pump times and it just keyed us in that there was something going on there. So once we got in there, uh it turned into uh a lot of uh work. Um but we've, we've repaired all of them, um and we're in a, we're, our utility report, we we publish a report with everything we find. And we give it to the HOAs, um we're looking at almost a ninety-page report of all stuff that we go in there and do. And a lot of it is uh those cleanouts. Um so when we got in there and went after it, uh we were able to do all of it in-house. And uh we, it it went into an inventory, all of our inventory was depleted three times over. Where we would have to go and buy more and go buy more, uh so that turned out to be a a really good thing that we got in there when we did. And we've pretty much solved that problem, uh the next community is Stony Brook and when we get into Stony Brook, it's gonna be more of the same, guaranteed. We've done a lot of work inside of Stony Brook, but every time we go in there and get into these cleanouts, we find these issues.
And Kenny, what, what part of the budget does this come out of?
Four hundred.
The four hundreds?
Yes.
And and we've got, I'm thinking, you know, the fiscal year we're operating under is, is there budget for this, all this work?
Yes, we have an inventory already, but we depleted it, we depleted.
So it's really just labor?
Yes, all, yes.
Have you gone into the downstream manholes, see how much dirt is built up?
Yeah, and we camera them and we we gravity test them, we we die.
So you've checked, you've checked the downstream manholes?
Yes, yeah, and saying we die, we 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 do a flow test all all through the, whatever community we're in. Um so Stony Brook is next and Sony, Sony Brook is more likely gonna be more of the same.
Are they singles or doubles?
Depends, there's storm drain in front or transformer to single, if there's not, they're doubles.
And Kenny, just out of curiosity, would we have had this capability to to solve or to fix the, this, these issues internally? A couple of years ago?
We spent twenty-six thousand dollars in two thousand eighteen for Daniel's Reserve when we ran into this.
We just write a check to a vendor.
You'd have been paying, you'd have been paying a premium.
And again, you know, I think there's kudos to to staff and utilities is building out this capability to fix these problems within our existing staff. And that has been, I think, the philosophy of of staff, especially in public works and utilities, you know, over the last couple of years. Build this capability in-house so we can build, you know, concrete pads, electrical, you know, this type of utility.
And this is a reoccurring.
Significant cost saves to us and we, you know, we we may not track it as much as we probably should have, but. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's exactly the direction that we should be going in, so all we're paying for is just, is material costs. Labor is absorbed just through our standard uh operating uh cost, but that's, that's great.
And that's, and that's big, say, are, we're paying for the rainwater to be treated at the plant, I mean, that, that, it, that is.
Thank God we don't, aren't working on a meter at the plant.
Yeah, Kenny, one thing too is uh the camera you bought.
Yeah, and we're.
Oh yeah, the camera to.
And we can chase it, so when we don't, we know there's, we know that there's a storm or a cleanout there, it's just not visible. So we go up onto the customer's side, drop it through the line and we can just chase it and actually just pinpoint that spot where it is, so.
Yeah, I would like to see some pictures.
Oh, we've got tons and tons of document.
I just can't picture a lawnmower, a lawnmower, the ones over on our neighborhood, on our street. You hit that concrete pad with a lawnmower and you guys riding your lawnmower is gonna go for.
Well, that's one of the biggest things is they shift and when they shift at the bottom, it, it breaks, it breaks, it breaks, it cracks it.
Yeah.
And if any of you have a crack, it's, it's just a matter of time, water's gonna pour into there.
Um well, if you have a root, a root's gonna go in there.
Roots are another big issue, if there's an oak tree anywhere in the area, it will find its way into that line.
Is there, is there a better way, we could be pouring pads or putting barriers around that, or is it just, it is what it is?
It's kind of an is what it is.
Unless you could make it flush.
And we paint them green, so you can see, you know, you, you, you can see it there. And if it's buried, we dig it up, we raise it and we paint it green and so you can at least see it. Like in Daniel's Preserve, we found, I think we did over, uh I think we did about a hundred and twenty and they have two hundred and nineteen homes in there. So we pretty much did them all and we were finding them two feet deep, buried, just, but anyway. Um uh sewer force main system, we have gone through and we're at the end of the uh the line for our sewer uh force mains. Um and we have added all the force mains and we're down to the point at Soccer Drive here. And our right-of-way permit has finally cleared, so within the next two weeks, we're going out there and we're gonna be excavating on both sides of the road. And then across the street for multiple reasons, but we are, that is going to be the last of it. So once we get this final valve or valves into our system, we will have almost complete control of our force main system. So, and I cannot express to you how important that is, because when we had breaks before, as you all know, it was a circus. We had no way to control it other than to go to every single lift station, shut it down. And then pray that we can get whatever work needs to be done within a ten to twelve-hour period, ten hours is our maximum. We get to that point and we're gonna start overflowing at its lowest point and it usually will always be Stony Brook, cause that's the end of the line. So we've gone through with, with the roundabout and with our valve insertion program. We've gotten to the point now that we can control things, so we've got multiple scenarios. Uh with this one up here, um we have a twelve and a six inch, this one here, we have an eight inch and a ten inch. And once we determine which way is going in, we put that last valve in, we have complete control of our system. And that's just huge for us, if we have a hit on the six inch, we can cut, close the six inch, keep the twelve inch open, we have the twelve inch open, we can cut, cut the twelve inch and keep the six inch open. So it's, it's just huge for us to get that. And we will also be uh excavating out here where we're going to put in pump well seven for the new lower Hawthorne well. Um our plans indicate that it's just gonna be a disaster when we get down there and see what's going on. Cause we have multiple lines going in multiple different directions and how we're actually gonna tie that new well into our raw line going back to the pump house. Or to the uh tanks, so that's upcoming, that's gonna be a a big deal when we get in there and open it up and see what's there. I have plans, two, two, three different scenarios with those plans and I I wanna go open it up and actually see what's there. And once we can determine where everything is and how it's working, we're gonna put our last valve on the line coming into the plant. Meaning if I turn that valve, I just shut the whole system off, so that's really big for us. Um uh the upcoming, uh we've got the potable water valves, once the sewer system is completely done and we got all of our valves in. We're gonna go back to the potable wa- water valves, um and that will be the complete Gateway Greens. We have one more of the final shutdown where we're gonna shut everybody down there, we're gonna be doing it at night. Um and that, I I don't wanna give an exact date, cause I don't know how we're gonna do the sewer, so that's coming down the road. So we're gonna have another big shutdown in Gateway Greens and that should hopefully be the final one, once we get that one done.
Excuse me? Which valve are you?
Uh sable dunes and the interconnect, they'll be both, they'll be both done. Um the, once those are done, we'll move on and we're gonna be going into finishing up Mahogany Run and then we will move across the street and go into that community. Um Summit Broadman, as we've seen, um this is the first time uh that we've actually got the county involved with the right-of-way permit. So when they come in to do a project like what they're doing, they have to come to us. We, we set up a meeting, the right-of-way uh with Lee County and they came in and we sat down and we went over the entire project. What we, you know, our plans, their plans, we all got on the same page, it's worked out great so far, we're almost done. They've been really moving, they've got somebody behind them really pushing them to get done, um and they've worked with us, coordinated with us, call us. Um and it's, it's really worked out, so this is where we really want it to be, so when they go to the county to get their right-of-way permit, they've gotta come to us. They've, they've built, built that into the permit uh to their, I'd say criteria. They have to at least come to us, we say no, good, this is what we want, this is how we wanna do it, they all came in, sat down, got on the same page and it's worked out uh really, really well.
They're pouring three pipes at the same time?
Yes.
Three at the same time? Right, what, what, six-inch bore? Eight-inch bore?
Three or three to four inches.
Four-inch bore? And what was their average depth?
And we're out there with them.
Right on your water lines and irrigation lines.
It's the sanitary sewer that really scared me, the, the water lines, they're, they're well under, uh it's the sanitary sewer.
Sewer's not in the middle of the road.
No, no, it's not, not along Griffin. Wow, there, yeah, but at the cross river, when they're coming across uh Gateway Boulevard, yes, but down on this uh Griffin Drive where they're born, it's that sanitary sewer. We, uh Brian marked the, the storm, storm sewer, uh that worked out really well and we've just stayed in front of them. Like we told them at first, when you come in, we're not gonna be doing multiple, multiple locates. So we come in and we locate the whole, they wanted the entire thing located first and we just flat out told them, no, we're not doing that. Tell us what you, what way you're coming, what way you wanna go, what your, your plans show and we'll coordinate with you. So as you go, we're right in front of you, because what happens is we go out there and we spend two days locating everything and then the guy doesn't show up. And it doesn't show up and oh, we're gonna be here next week, so we have to get in front and then they call from again and we get into this gigantic waste of our time. So we, we, we cleared that up too.
Are you adding ASBILs with all of these things that we could put into the master?
Yeah, they would, let's say, they're, they're really not, they, they're not boring for us, they're doing it for the, the schools.
Okay, but it's still in the district, the broadband project is, we need to know where it is, right?
Yeah.
We'd like to know where.
We'd like to know where it is and if they call in to locate, any of those areas where that broadband is, it will be located.
I, I think what Bob's trying to say, is this an asset that we should be adding to our G I?
Absolutely. It really doesn't matter, I'm not saying we own it, or know where it is, I think it should be.
They, using the pipe, the conduit that's got the locator tape in it?
Yes, they always do that, yeah, cause they, it's fiber optic, so they, when they, when they call for a locate in that area, they will come out and locate it. Getting the ASBILs, I mean, I will certainly try, but that, that is not, it's, it's not ours, I mean, they're, you know.
But they're running it through our property or our community, we ought to have it in our master system.
I agree, I agree totally, but to, to actually get them to give us the ASBILs, I mean, that's, that's a task.
Yeah, even the gas company, they don't ASBIL and had a problem and, and this started at the very beginning, working with the county. And we got to the point where we demand and they include us, it's an additional insured on their certificate of insurance. So we don't have to chase subcontractors and the county representative basically said, we gave them a list of demands. And said, when you satisfy Gateway, we'll issue the permit.
That's big for us, that's really big for us, that is very, I mean, it took us a while to get there, but we finally got there. So when they do stuff like this, they come, they have to come into us, at least sit down with us and we go over everything and it clears a lot of things up. Like the last, with the last group that did their uh bore through uh on Griffin Drive, it was just a disaster. They left their equipment, open trenches, they hit our water main, I mean, it was a disaster, hitting everything.
When Hotwire put in, did the whole thing, we went to look before they put the first fade in the ground and said, we wanna have ASBILs when you're done. And here's the format we wanted, do you care? And they gave us choices, our provider picked the choice he wanted and they said they'd give it to us. And now it's a simple thing, we just load it into our, our GIS and I would think we ought to do the same here.
Yeah.
That's it.
Alright.
Uh irrigation modeling for Tetra Tech, I'm gonna come back for this um in probably in October, maybe the first week of November. Um we've been really working on the three-day, three-day um irrigation modeling on our side. And we've monkeyed with the numbers, monkeyed with the consumption reports and we've gained pretty much parity. So on paper and what we see on our side, this will work and.
Your irrigation modeling.
Yes, we take all the numbers from all the communities, combine them daily, monthly, weekly and basically cut the community in half. And it would be a, you know, you got three days, you got three days and we can even build a, 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 a bill day. Like Monday will be nobody waters and we just build water, which will really help us in the long run. So I'd like it to take it to the next step where we go out with data loggers, give us two or three months of really good solid pressure data. Take it to Tetra Tech, have them model it and tell us, is this, is this feasible, can we make this work? And if we get to that point, I'll come back and then it will be a matter of getting valves in place. And make it as simple as possible for us to control the valving. Um one of the problems we ran into would be uh the thirty-day watering variance, that one, if you got new cert, new sod, new turf. Um so it would be from nine to four P M would be the best bet to just leave the system open. So if you wanna have your guy come in and work on your irrigation system, it's there and then at four or five or six, we turn our valves and then go into that. So this is really starting.
You allow for some variation, but it's controlled variation.
Right, right, and it's saying, usually if, if we ever have to shut our irrigation system down, we'll get flooded with calls. Today was the day my irrigation guy showed up or it, it happens every time we do it. So we will, we'll get really out in front of it, but by the numbers that we have and our, our consumption, um it will work as far as the numbers.
Overwatering, it's gonna happen probably between midnight and six in the morning.
Yeah, our peak time is four AM.
People can't see it.
Four AM is the peak time, every day.
Yeah, if you're doing it on purpose.
Yeah.
And then um irrigation fire hydrants.
Who are you putting these?
I would put that, we're, we're, I'm wanting to put them at the fire points, north, south, east, west.
Okay.
Um.
And this is discharge primarily, right? What do you?
This is irrigation.
Treated, treated F font that everybody's irrigating with, have fire hydrant points for, uh mostly for flushing.
Yeah, okay.
Uh we can flush our main lines.
Just make sure that we got those identified to the fire department.
I've already, I say, I, I, I talked to chief early about this first, I took it to chief early and said, you know, what do you think? And he, he, he was kind of iffy, um I gave him city of Cape Coral, they have over three thousand irrigation, if you ever drive around Cape Coral, they're everywhere. Uh for their system, I gave him that as a reference. They have to, they have to be pantom purple and they have a white cap on top of it and that's for the fire department, but.
You gotta watch that, that's the last thing you want, is somebody hooking up on that.
If you see a purple fire hydrant, usually, I mean, everybody will kinda know like, that's, that's not right, there's some, don't mess with that one. But these would, and they could serve, they could serve uh as a draw, um we could go to South Florida. Uh, but these would, and they could serve, they could serve uh as a drawl. Um, we could go to South Florida Water Management and have a, uh, ask them if we get into an emergency situation, we can open that line up and dump it um for our level control, like a two thousand seventeen event. Um, fire suppression, uh, data points, but mostly for flushing the big mains that really we can just blow those things out.
And, and you're gonna come back and let us know where these points of consideration are.
Yes. Well, yeah, well, the first place I would put it would be at the very end, in between the entrance to Stony Brook and the entrance to Stony Brook Condos right there. That would be the first point right there. Start maybe one a year. But I'd like to get one. Cuz that, that, that irrigation main right there um isn't, it, it, that would be an excellent flush point. Just for.
And then when you open it up, what, you're just flushing it where? Just?
You're flushing it out.
Right in the road.
Oh, you're looking to it.
Okay, so you're not discharging.
Yeah, you're blowing it out the other way.
Okay, I got you. I got you.
And, and going the other way.
And that would be all, and this would be all done in-house. So the only thing, it would cost us labor plus whatever it costs for a fire hydrant, which right now I believe is twenty-six hundred and that number swaps up and down. Sometimes it's higher, sometimes it's lower. So it would only be, it would be an in-house fire project.
So you're trying to get this connected to where it flushes into a storm sewer?
Yeah, that would be, that would be, that's, yeah, that's, that's the point where I'd like to go. And then up at the other end of the Gardner Building, Commerce. So that, that, and then uh, uh, this was an add-in. I wanted to cover Arborwood. Um, we're having some real issues with Arborwood. Um, their sanitary sewer is completely charged again. Um, they have, right now they have, I believe, five people. We've shut them down as far as meters. We're not doing anything until they've clear our, clear our, clear that sanitary sewer out. Um, it happened, I would say, last month. They had nobody on the system.
Construction crews?
Construction crews. Nobody on the system and I've got nine feet of water in the lift station. And the entire san, well, not the entire sanitary sewer, but a good chunk of it is full of water and then full of sand.
Is, is somebody dumping it on their purpose, like?
Hmm, I think it's just from what I can see, it's that the cleanouts on the, up in the customer or the, where they're building the house.
Water drain.
And then it, it, there's no other way it would come, it could come in there.
Uh, I'd, I'd suggest going out there in an unmarked vehicle someday.
Oh, you don't even need that. I mean, you can just drive around and see. I mean, they've got dumpsters, trucks, I mean.
They're going to uh close them up real quick.
But they came in, the first time we told them, you know, you've gotta come in here and clear this, like, right now. And they did. They came in, they cleared it all out, they pumped it out, they jetted it. And then a week later, it's, they'll back up again. So we're at the point where we, okay, no more meters, no more nothing until this gets taken care of. And they came back and asked, you know, can, if we give you a date, can you go ahead and stall meters? Cuz they've already got people moving in there. Um, and we told them, no, until this is done, until this is cleaned, uh, we're not doing anything for you. So we're at that point right now. Tetra Tech is uh, got an onsite person Wyatt uh out there and we, I coordinate with him. We go out there every day. He's out there every day.
This is sanitary sewers, not force mains.
No.
Our force mains are okay.
So far. We've had, and we had an issue with the Pestoia, at the, at the Pestoia end. Um, and that's still under review. Uh, it sat there for, I think, four years with nothing in it. And it got, it got plugged and we had to put a Thompson pump on it, pull it out backwards and we were able to, to move water. And when we did that, we just used potable water, just to pump it through, to get it moving. Um, and with all the sand, I'm not pumping anything into that force main. I'm just waiting for them to finish it up and then we'll be right back. This is Pestoia all over again where we had a completely full system and not a house on Pestoia and they had to go through this entire uh process again. So this is gonna, you know, I'm guessing this is gonna keep happening until they're at buildout. And finally, uh, the uh line of succession. On this one, we're getting kind of a, a two for one here. Um, I've got Felix, Felix to train somebody to step into this position. He can, it, it's pretty much impossible for him to be a field supervisor and then work with all the stuff that on my end that he's gonna have to do and to learn. So as I pulled Felix off of, off of that position, I put Isaac Carrillo into that position and Isaac Carrillo is running the field crew right now. Um, Felix, for his first two to three months, is gonna be strictly working with Bill Shaw, our electrician. Um, if you're going to be in a utility manager position, you have to have a fundamental and solid understanding of electricity. Bill is a guru with our utility. Um, you will not find a more experienced uh electrician, utility electrician than what he can do. So I've got Felix working with him for, for a good amount of time until he gets a real, real comfortable with that and then we'll move on. Um, I've asked Leslie to set him up so he can go in there and work with Leslie for a little while, just kinda get a broad overview of it. But uh, this line of succession would be if, if I leave or whatever happens with me, uh Felix can step into that position, at least, you know, as a stopgap and have a good general understanding of what's going on and keep everything in, in motion. So Felix is doing that and Isaac Carrillo is running the fields, field operations right now. And just to say, uh, Isaac is uh, he's, he's a very good individual for this, for that position. He came in not knowing anything and uh he's, he's an excellent field guy. He's just, I can't say enough about him. And so Felix is gonna be busy with me and Bill for quite a while right now as we get him up to speed on everything. And that was, that was uh, that's what I have right now.
And Kenny, while you're up, do you wanna go ahead and move into your?
Next.
Just stand. Your agenda item.
Okay. Uh, what this basically is, is, is funds left over that we have not spent uh for the four hundred and three oh one. I'll do the three oh one real fast because the three oh one is pretty simple to, to do. Um, what you see are line items of, of, we've already spent and this is the remaining balance. The other two, the irrigation upgrade, we saved thirty-seven thousand dollars. We did a lot of this in-house and this is the savings. So we'd like to move, and then we have the emergency bypass pump. Um, we got stalled because of COVID and because of the contractor, so we had two we had to do. Um, we found a contractor, uh Naples or Florida Utility Solutions. They do it um at, at a, at a, at a much lower cost. And this is, this, this is the result. So we've got each, each pump for about a twenty thousand dollar savings for each pump, which is forty thousand dollars. We would like to move this into new lift station panels and then throw the remainder of that into the new valve program, which is nineteen thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. New lift station panels would be fifty-two thousand dollars. To that, with that on the three oh one of the capital side, on the four hundred side, uh total requested funds to transfer one hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars. The first three items are pretty straightforward. Pump and oil maintenance, every year we'll budget ten thousand dollars, twelve thousand, fifteen, depending on that. It's there in case something goes wrong. Uh, over the last five years, we've rehabbed every single one of our sandstone wells with new meters, wells, pumps, casings. We're all good to go there. It'll be there next year. Um, same thing for uh irrigation well. Well, irrigation well six, our plan was to buy the well and the motor, or the, the pump and the motor, have it in stock. And then have it installed. We pull the old one out and put the new one in and have the new one in, uh rebuilt and then use it as stock. With our pump well seven or the new Hawthorne well, we, we're looking at, at, once they're done with that well, they go down to pump uh to our existing lower Hawthorne well and put the new pump in as a part of, as a part of that project. So uh electricity, um, we have thirty, I think we have forty-two thousand dollars left over. And I'm requesting thirty thousand of it be, be uh transferred. Computer equipment, that was for um the twenty-one cycle. We were anticipating having to buy certain amounts of equipment for our new system. Um, and we did not go that route cuz we built it into the new budget with what we wanna, what we want to do. So we put that in there in case we needed uh to buy any, any equipment or anything along those lines. Removal of the pneumatic tank, I came to you earlier and asked for a transfer. This is the leftover funds that has been since removed. It's gone. We'd like to put sixty thousand dollars into uh lift station R and M. And this is gonna be for uh plug valves, check valves in these vaults. Um, with the estimate of us doing this completely in-house, um, we're looking at about a thirty thousand dollar savings as opposed to on a rehab, we would have it done then. We can do this in-house now. We have the capability, so we should. And I, I really would like to get after that. And then the inventory is another big one. Um, we've gone through this year, uh, a lot of inventory. Um, a lot of it. And with the new budget, we, we planned on replenishing it and, but on this year, what happened is we would like to replenish what we have and get some real key components. Uh, eight inch tee, sixteen inch tee, those kinds of things that, um, if we have a major break on a Sunday afternoon, we're not, we're not gonna be able to. These are, these are key components that we would basically hope sit in, sit in our storage container and never gets used, but we need it to be there uh in, in, in that event. So, and we buy this, we buy these components at a much discounted price. We get, we get the government pricing on these, these components. So it's a, i- if we have a major break and we have to bring a contractor in, we're gonna, you know, they're gonna build in their pricing for it. So it's, it's a huge difference between what they pay and what we get as a government entity. So that's basically uh where I would, and I would like to encumber it and roll it into next year's budget and put it into these four accounts so that we can uh spend it.
Nitpicking your numbers, somebody put, picking up the two dollar tab on the transfer fifteen, one fifteen, six thirty-six versus one fifteen, six thirty-eight? Is that a typo?
Probably.
And then you got seventy-one thousand versus sixty-nine thousand on the other one.
Where we at?
I, I, I didn't think the numbers had to match perfect, but they don't. That's what I'm wondering.
Totals add up to six thirty-eight, so.
I think it's typo.
Yeah.
This went through several iterations.
Yeah. So you just need to true it up. I mean, the, the numbers are your numbers, but the documentation needs to be true it up.
Yeah, I, I'll have to make sure everything balances before I send it to Sonia.
That's why I wondered if you were trying to balance them.
And there's another uh advantage to that inventory too, because when they were working on the roundabout, their contractor was having a hard time getting some pumps in and parts and we basically said, okay, here, we, we, we've got them and we either took them as a credit or they replaced the parts for us, but otherwise they would've been.
We did that, we did that several times. We did that five different times.
And you could buy the board needed?
I made the motion to approve the transfer for the four hundred and three oh one account.
Oh, second. Motion a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Bill, you're okay with it?
Yes, I've said I, I thought I, you didn't hear me? I said I, yes, thank.
Okay, and uh Laura will move over to your item.
Sure, uh, my, my item actually affects the fiscal twenty-two budget. Uh, everything will be made in the enterprise fund. It will have no impact on the assessment because I'm just moving uh, the, the stuff is coming from reserves into the accounts. It's just moving the fund, so bottom line, there's no effect. Um, this is a result of the issue that was raised with the billing that Leslie talked about earlier. And if you remember when we were going through doing the budgeting, there was some discussion and we talked about this briefly earlier as well as to why the um the estimates that were in from Infomark for these two accounts, the bulk potable, potable water and the wastewater purchases were so much lower than what we had budgeted. Um, and it was because we were under billed. And so after talking to Kenny and Leslie, I would like to bring the fiscal twenty-two budget numbers up to match what we had budgeted originally for fiscal twenty-one. So that's a, a total of two hundred twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars. Um, down at the bottom, if you look under the recommendation area, it explains exactly where it's coming from. So seventy percent of it is gonna come out of the maintenance reserves and the other thirty percent will come out of the facility expansion reserves.
Motion to approve that.
Oh, second.
Alright, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
And let's just make sure when, anytime we're making budgeting adjustments, you know, whether it's Kenny reallocating, moving things around, that we're, we're tracking that, making sure that we're making the adjustments. Cuz we.
It all goes to Sonia.
Yep. Anytime we move funds, whether it's under our existing budget, moving it from one G L to another or one item, we need to make sure that we're tracking that.
You almost need an amended form, but it's not an official form because we don't usually do that. But we need something, a paper trail for that. Yeah, I agree.
I, I asked for any changes. They're, they were lead to come this way, like through the board or if somebody like Tim had to move some things around inside his budget, I request an email and then that all gets forwarded to Infomark in order to have the changes made.
Yeah, and make sure we just confirm with Stephen how we track. Um, how do we, how do we track movement? And I'm sure he does it in some way, but it would be nice for us to at the beginning of, or during the budgeting season, just say, hey, this is, we've out, we've originally allocated fifty thousand for this, twenty-five was relocated due to a, a priority adjustment or, or non-use or whatever that is.
I, 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 I'll just touch in cuz I had something like this to bring it up under the supervisory's comment. Um, unless it's an emergency, I, I, I believe we, the board approved the budget. We approved each individual line item. And like I see Kenny coming to us pretty much the whole year. Hey, I need to move this and does the board approve it? I don't know if he has a set amount, a dollar amount, but he does come to us and at least communicates that with us. I was surprised a few days ago when I, I was looking at the current budget and I'm looking at July financials and there was a line item that I was told that we didn't have the money for, we didn't have the money starting February, March.
What's the line on?
Plant replacement. And it was thirty thousand dollars was, as of July thirty-first, four thousand dollars was spent. We had twenty-five thousand dollars. So to say that I was irritated, it was, it was an understatement. When I was asking months prior to get the plate, plant replacement done and I don't have the money, I don't have the money. And then I'm looking at July financials and there was twenty-five thousand dollars. So I think either the board needs to come up with direction for staff to say, is it, is it a dollar amount? Then you come to us. I think we should know no matter what, because if a resident's coming to me and, and saying, hey, you know, I, I just pulled out, I asked you a board pack and I see that you had twenty-five thousand, but nothing was done. I wouldn't be able to answer to that resident and say, well, that money was relocated to something else. And I'm really, you know, the four, the five of us are gonna be the one that will be questioned, not necessarily staff when we're out there. So I went to Brian and I asked him, I said, so you, you know, there's, there's twenty-five thousand dollars as of July thirty-first, granted, you know, we're in August, but I don't recall any plant replacement, you know, work. Uh, where does the money go? And then the answer was like, well, we had to move it, we had to reallocate it, maybe some to irrigation. But I didn't get a, a straight answer. And if you're reallocating any money on those line item budgets, you should be able to tell me exactly how much money went to where.
It should've come here.
It will, it should've, to me is, is needed to come to the board. So as, I, so then I went back and I, I had a, I talked to Laura yesterday at the office and we looked and now there's three hundred dollars in there. So I wouldn't necessarily had pushed for the hundred thousand dollars for FI twenty-twenty-two for plant replacement if I knew there was twenty-five thousand dollars in that account of this year that could be used for. So I, I do believe that anytime that there's a, unless it's an emergency, anytime there's a, a line item change on the current budget that needs to come for board approval or at least for, for, you know, for us to know. Sonia, do you have any?
Yeah, cuz it, I, I think it has to go down to prioritization and I think we've, I think our stance has been like, even with the district manager, giving them the ability, if it's a budget item and it's been pre-approved, giving the district manager the ability to spend those dollars without having to come back arbitrarily.
Totally agree, yeah.
But transferring's a different story.
When you, when you're moving, yes. Uh, even if it's within the department, I, I think we need to have awareness uh and even approval for, for those transactions to take place.
So Laura, would you, since Brian is not here, would you have Brian send us a detail from all the transfers from the Jul- financials ending July thirty-first? That where we did have around twenty-five thousand dollars and now that we have none, can he send the board a detailed list of all the transfers where the money went to? So at least I, I'm aware of it cuz I don't think the answer was very clear.
To one, okay.
I can't do that.
I think it was more. We had, we had that, uh, you and I talked about that yesterday too, but what shows on the financials is not always, is not what's available in the account because the financials can only show what we've actually spent so far. Where in the curify system, everything that we have a P O that's outstanding, we have funds allocated that we may not have necessarily paid a bill against that yet, it's never gonna match.
And, and I get that. And I get the contractual stuff too, that it's gonna show that we have it, but by the end of the year it will be, you know, zero out. But I only had one question and then it was one line item that I looked and there was this transfer. I had one question about mainscapes invoice, who knows it. I feel like every time I just research one item, when it comes to the money, there's an issue. So.
Well, if it's a transfer, it's a transfer.
It's a transfer.
It is gone.
And staff doesn't have the authority to spend money that, that.
Yeah. That they don't have.
Regardless of whether they've got money in their budget, you know, their items, staff does not have the authority to spend outside of what's budgeted. Now, we could move money, but that's at the board's discretion.
I know you weren't here.
Yeah.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Well, I, I just have one comment. In my frame of references, the waterway management budget to Pelican Reserve, we have a set number of dollars that says waterway manager, whatever that number is. And if an item within that budget, the subsets were more costly than I uh originally thought, we move money from one of the other approved accounts that we haven't spent to that account. And then Laura trues it to the budget and that has to be done before the P O's issue. But what's, my question is, what's the dollar latitude we allow the manager to make those kind of calls? I certainly don't wanna know about every twenty thousand dollars. I mean. I certainly don't want to know about every twenty thousand dollars. I mean, if he's staying within his total budget and the judgment of that team is that they had to move it a little bit from this pocket to that pocket to balance it out.
Well, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it would be a dollar amount because you have light item that's a thousand dollars. If they, I think it has to be a percentage of the light item. You can move a percentage of that particular light item. If you want to move fifteen or less total of this total amount item, you can do it at your discretion as long as it stays within the category. Anything outside, because if you do a dollar amount, many of the stuff for some of this.
Yeah, if you've got a night, it's twenty five thousand dollars, you transfer twenty four thousand.
Yeah, that's pretty much what happened.
Why was it twenty five to begin with? The first question.
So what?
Well, but again, and to answer your question, if, if all things are good.
Well, we're changing.
But, but the problem is that sometimes something occurs that requires an adjustment. Of course, there's two ways to look at it. You can just say, well, I need more money. Or you could offset it. I prefer the guy that looks for the offset.
The first one comes here. Got to come here.
Well, at the end of the day, and I think we, and Laura, what I'd kick back to you is just if you can look into how often does this occur? And is there a staff recommendation? You know, if you're moving, whether it's a percentage of, of the budget item, but regardless, there should be awareness.
And it seems to happen more towards the end of the, of the budget year as funds run out.
That's what I would think.
Or if we have a big unexpected expense, but the majority of the moves don't start getting requested until probably May or June.
So everything should come to the board for awareness and even if we don't have to talk about it, but even if it's, hey, these are the.
Well, I don't have a problem with that. I think the format that Kenny just, Kenny just did is a, is a good one to use.
Yeah, I mean, if Kenny can do it, if there's anything, if it's an emergency, it's on his department. And I don't think plant or anything like that is an emergency. So I, I think if Kenny's able to give us that information, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can just mimic what works for us and work with that, copy that.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, great. Okay. I think that's all.
Sorry. That was everything. Yep.
Can we just have what consent?
I have nothing on consent.
Nothing to pull from consent agenda?
I do have one item, just page five. Line one fifty three, just the, the last name of the deputy.
Page five, line one fifty three.
So it's actually the last thing. It's true Scott now, pre Scott.
Line one fifty, what was it?
One fifty three. Eight five. Page forty, sorry.
Prescott?
Yeah, it's T R U S C O T T.
T R U?
Mm-hmm. S O T T.
True Scott.
Yeah. And is, is that it? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And Chris, I didn't see future business in your update. Is there any, anything to add? Just.
I, I do not have at the moment. We will be working in the next couple of weeks to finalize and develop the resolution for the rate case we have underway. To be some minor adjustments, the utility rates and the irrigation tiers. So you'll be seeing that. We hope the sixteenth of fall will have it in the first meeting in October and that'll come to the board to, for approval instead of, set the public hearing and implement those new rates in January.
All right, thanks. Supervisor comments, I'm going to start just because I think there might be some discussion on this and then I'm sure if you will add in, but in light of Chris's resignation that came through this week, I talked to Chris today and talked to him early this week. I think we did everything in our power the, the last time. And Chris feels like this is the right, right time for him and the right opportunity. So we are going to have to, Chris is going to give us, try to get to the end, he's going to look at his schedule, but he's, you know, been very willing to, to work with us. About his, kind of his exit strategy and he's putting together, you know, working, working with Laura and other members of staff to identify everything he has in flight, make sure there's a good transition plan. So I think he's doing his due diligence, which is, I wouldn't expect anything less. With that being said, you know, what I would like to do, and I, I would like to make this motion, whether we do it today or at the next board meeting, I'm, I'm okay because this is something that we're going to need to, need to talk about. What my recommendation would be is to promote Laura to the assistant district manager position. One, she's got her district manager certification. She's been working alongside with Chris and can help in the interim process in Chris's replacement. The fact that she's in place, has specific knowledge of what, you know, what Chris has on his plate and, and even with him being out some of the last two weeks, she's been able to step in and do some things there. I think it would be the most pertinent position for us right now to help in the interim as we put out a search for a new district manager, talk with Chris. And I'm sure, you know, if you haven't, I think most of you have probably had some conversation or will have conversation over the next couple of weeks to determine what that profile looks like. I think when we drafted the assistant district manager role, it was what we thought ideally that position would look like. So it's, it's very, and it's difficult to find what we need because we're a small organization. Someone has to wear a lot of different hats. So I think this is the right move for us at, at this time. In addition to that, I also would like to consider, and I think I've mentioned this before and we've had conversations around it, but we, it wasn't necessarily in flight. I would like the consideration to, to promote Kenny to a utilities director role, which would be a new level within our, our, our organizational structure. So right now manager is, is the highest level from our, let's call it our, our functional areas. I would like to look at promoting Kenny to that director role. He doesn't have to backfill his utility manager position necessarily today. It'll be a title, but it'll also allow Kenny to have more strategic input in the overall kind of operation and direction of the district and it would be instrumental in the gap that we currently have, that we will be having once Chris vacates his, his role. So what I would like to do is kind of work on a package to formally present to, to the board in the next board meeting so we can form it with, with dollars, you know, and roles and responsibilities and those types of things.
Are you proposing two hires, one to backfill Chris and one to backfill Laura?
Yes.
Or three?
And what, no, it would be, it would, it would be a, Chris's replacement as director. Laura will be promoted to assistant director and we would backfill her business manager, but I'd like to tweak that position and make it more of, back to more of an accounting, more kind of CPA finance type position. I think the assistant district manager, in my opinion, could now form into more of a operation, kind of a, a PMO type leader. Who does have reporting, budgeting accountability, but hire someone more like kind of what Mike was, more of a hardcore CPA with more finance background. And in the last budget discussion, there was someone that made a, a public comment around some opportunities as a CPA that she saw where we could have someone with a little bit more experience that can work tighter with, with, with Stephen and Infomark and provide us more alignment to budgeting versus project versus maintenance.
Do we project this in our twenty two forecast? Or do we have projected a new manager?
Yeah.
Do we also have the Laura position?
We, I, I think we're within budget because even with Chris's increase, which is in the budget, backfilling him, I think we can, we'll probably stay close. There might have to be an adjustment. Laura, Laura's promotion would fall within what we had budgeted for the assistant district manager. Her backfill would fall right within what we already have budgeted for the role. So I don't think there would be any net, net additional costs to budget.
We don't have a position for Kenny's, Kenny's at the top level. Right now we have the three people. We have Laura.
Kenny would be the.
Uh, then we have Brian and we have Kenny, those three positions. Why, why do we need to add a position at Kenny's? Just call Kenny a director instead of whatever it was. What are we doing about doing, putting another under Kenny?
No, no. I mean, right now my proposal is only to promote Kenny to a director level, which would be a title promotion.
So it's title only. It's not opening up a new position.
It's not opening up a new position. No, but it will, it will, in the future, because what, what Kenny's doing is he is building a succession plan within his organization. So at some point in the, in the future, it could open up the opportunity for a utilities manager to be promoted from, you know, from the ranks. But that's not under consideration today. It's a title promotion for Kenny and I'll probably look at some type of a increase to go along with it. Because I will, I would be, and I say I, I mean, we would be asking Kenny to take on some more responsibility in addition to utilities from a more, you know, top of the house tactical and strategic perspective.
To be clear, two positions, the, the manager, the operations manager, and then to backfill Laura's position. That's what we're talking about.
That's what we're talking about.
What Kenny is just an.
Yeah, Kenny's, Kenny's would be a title promotion with, you know, with, with a compensation increase. So it's doing in quarter, in quarter, in order of operation, it would be to promote Laura to the assistant district manager role. And to backfill her current position with a modification to that job. And then it would be a promotion for Kenny. Those are the three things.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to offer a slightly different scenario. We don't know how long it's going to take to fill Chris's spot. Therefore, I think that it makes more sense to promote Laura to interim director. Sooner or later, there will be meetings that she has to attend or documents that she has to sign. And if she can sign them as interim director as opposed to assistant director, it, it has a lot more weight. Then when we decide who is going to be the permanent director, assuming it's not she, but possibly it would be, she can move to the assistant director's spot.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. And we, and that, to me, that's kind of a little bit of semantics. So we can promote her to assistant director and then acting interim director for the duration that the director position is, is vacant. So I, I agree with you, Bill. It's fine. It's a little bit of semantics, but I don't disagree with the.
I've got a totally different way of doing it. First of all, I'm totally opposed to what you're saying. I would like to see us go to some of these other companies, management companies that are doing these and get some ideas of people that will come in and immediately be opportunity for district manager. I don't want to take and promote anybody until we've had gone out and looked to see what the opportunities are on the market for both the assistant district manager and the district manager. I'm not ready to fill that position yet.
I just, my only argument with that is we're going to have a vacancy that.
We got four weeks.
Not necessarily. He's given a two week notice.
No, he didn't.
Yes, he did. He said two weeks in his resignation.
I'm reading the letter right here.
And.
Says four weeks.
Chris, why is it?
Thirty days, I believe.
Thirty days.
Yeah, well, Chris and I spoke today and he said he'll, he will try to get to the end of the month, but.
Well, my thing is I don't want to rush it and I'm totally opposed to going. I have no problem with the director on what Kenny's talking about, what you're doing on that. I totally agree with that. But I'm not ready to rush in until we've interviewed people for the, what, what used to be the assisted district. Now it could be the district manager position.
I just don't know if you can have two net new employees at the top of the house.
I just don't believe there's qualification. There's nothing against Laura. I just don't think she's qualified for those positions.
Well.
Okay, I, I have a question. So may I?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So the last time I checked with Laura, we had about thirty candidates that, that sent out obligations, right Laura? Including yourself for the position. And we, as far as I know, have not reached out to any of those candidates for an interview because either we felt, we felt like none of them were qualified. What is it going to be different now, Ed?
Because we haven't gone statewide and gone to the agencies like going to Joe De Cerbo and his group. We haven't done a full court press on trying to bring people out. I think we need to immediately have a statewide, have a firm come in that does this, headhunters that do this professionally. Give them, we've got excellent position statements of what we're looking for. We just went through that. There's no sense of repeating it. Give them the assistant district manager position, give them the district manager position and let them go out and do the headhunter.
I'm not opposed because this falls right into, you know, my area of expertise. I would not be opposed to looking at having an agency or someone with expertise coming for the district manager role, but I am absolutely opposed to hiring two net new positions at the, at the top of our house. And I think we just might disagree on what we think that assistant district manager role is between you and I, Ed, but I, I think in order for us to stay as whole as we can and to put us at least amount of risk, I think Laura's got her district manager qualifications. She is an operating as second in command. At least from an operations perspective, when it comes to business administration with Chris, Chris has been grooming Laura for this role. And the recommendation that I have from Chris is, is to promote Laura to that assistant district manager. Is that not what your recommendation would be?
Yeah, I thought that, that was an excellent idea. And we talked about performance auditing and higher level business management. And that's where that concept came up is, is backfilling more of an accountant, office manager type spot and moving her up into that transition where it is more performance audit, budget tracking, project management, where here's where the money comes in. This was the enabling language, what it was for, and this is how it was spent. And not only for the board, but also for the residents.
If she wants to take and try that position for the next four weeks and do it, but to transfer the title, no, I'm totally opposed to that.
I think we need to focus our attention on backfilling district manager role.
She can take and during the next four weeks, let's just see how things work out. But to make that position, that statement right now, I'm not prepared to do that.
Yeah, I don't think you would put some money.
So in recap, Chris, your, your recommendation is that we would move, that Laura is ready for the assistant district manager position, given her reviews, given her performance, given your side by side experience with her. You would be, feel comfortable regardless if you're here or not, that Laura will take that position right now.
Well, she's, she's taken on a lot of that responsibility and also has been working with Kenny and Brian and myself to like get out in the field and see things for herself. And really I think one of the weaknesses that we have at our level is that higher end performance audit, if you want to call it that, but that fiscal accountability and that data that needs to be out there for both the board members. And it, and it's so different when, what you were talking about, hey, this transfer. Or when we had that whole discussion with Matt Tower, was it fourteen hundred for all these washouts or was it thirty thousand dollars? Yeah, some of, some of those controls really need to be tightened up and I think she's the person for it in the organization. The district manager position is a totally different animal.
Yeah. So Tony, just, this is not an item that's, that's on the agenda. There is, I think, some timing considerations. Would, would we need to put this on the agenda for the next board meeting or could we make a motion?
The board could open up the metaphor discussion comments by anybody who's participating remotely or participating in the, in the audience and ask them to comment on this. So if the board wants to take action.
Is there any comments from, from the public, either online or in the room today regarding this matter?
What's wrong with her just taking that position? And like I said, seeing how it goes for thirty days. What's, what's the difference? Nothing changes.
I have an opinion. I'm Mary Alphritz from Silver Lakes. I do believe that continuity is important, especially as we're starting to move into the budget year. You, you folks work very closely together and I, I've seen it in the limited time I've been here. I understand what Mr. Tinkle is concerned with. I do think she is as qualified as anybody in this room to step up and try to smooth out the edges and move forward.
Thank you. Yeah, Joe, if you want to step up.
I'm a call, it's Tony Burke Gateway. I have a recent times worked with Laura and I think that she is qualified to hold that assistance role. And I think that, I know Ed's concerned about her lack of energy or engineering expertise, but that could be carried by the number one person. That's, that could be your engineer and you have people working underneath them. I think that sometimes you don't need the assistant and the primary to have the same skill sets. They could complement each other and supplement each other and have different strengths. And I think that Laura would be a good choice.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Anybody online?
Oh, not getting any chats in.
So what I would like to do is, I, I would like to make a motion to promote Laura to the assistant district manager role. And upon Chris's vacancy, uh to identify her as the interim manager for the duration that the position is until it is filled. And I would ask that we, within range of the compensation, uh approve to uh increase her base to eighty-five K.
What is she currently at?
Seventy-one plus bonus.
All right, I'll second your motion.
Thank you. I have a motion second. Uh any additional discussion?
Yeah, I go by, I mean, I have, I have utmost confidence in Laura's ability to go forward. However, uh I have to subscribe to what Ed said about do the full court press to get a uh a district manager, an operations manager down here. I also don't know what the big rush is. Seeing that we got two weeks to thirty days. Uh it doesn't take a thing away from the proposal, except that I just think it's premature. That's just my opinion.
I think we, I think we need to, I think we need to act, move on this.
I hear you.
As quickly as possible.
We went through this Chinese fire drill Chris threatened before, not threatened, well, when he had the reservation. And, you know, it's been a couple of months since that occurred and we haven't even gotten viable candidates. So what we're doing isn't working. We need to do something more aggressively.
We haven't, we haven't done it.
We have.
We need to go to a headhunter.
I'm agreeing with, I'm agreeing with.
Get, get some people in here and get it out statewide.
So, so let's just go a time, so since it's up for discussion, let's just go a timeline. So if, let's just give the benefit of the doubt, Chris will be here for thirty days. If we go out tomorrow and try to get somebody to replace it, interviews will have to take place.
It'll take sixty to ninety days.
And, and that's what I was gonna say. So we'll be out, we, we'll still have nobody. So we'll be able to have a guess. So that's my concern and I'm really laying heavy. Chris has, I'm not done, Ed.
You're making, you're making, you're not.
Ed, I'm not done. Okay, I'll repeat it myself to you later. So Chris, you as a district manager feel comfortable with the position and, and having Laura? So I, I think you have done an excellent job in a lot of things. I don't think always we saw eye to eye for a lot of things, but I think overall you have done an incredible job. And I'm going to take your word on this as well because I think you wouldn't put us in a position to, you know, not be superstar. So in light of the timing, in light of that, that if you think about thirty days and the next meeting is in two weeks, so even if we had all the candidates interviewing, you know, because I would like to interview at that point the district manager alone, it's just two separate different things. I think promoting Laura as an assistant district manager right now with, and moving her salary to eighty-five thousand, I think it's, it's something that we, we have heard from people that have worked closely with her staff and her direct report. And we all have worked with her. So I, I think it's, we separate district manager is one thing, assistant district manager is a completely totally different thing. And, and I'm.
And the last thing I'll say here is what we were planning, you know, a month, two months ago, that environment has changed. We're no longer in that environment. The needs that we had two months ago are not the needs that we have right now today. Chris has been in this role, uh or at least with the district for five years. That's how much information he's got to transition in the next thirty days. And if we go out to a headhunter, it's gonna be at a minimum sixty to ninety days before those two positions get filled, which having two brand-new people at the top of the house is gonna put us at tremendous risk. Just go back to, we've all been in, in this community a long time. Anytime we have transitioned from one district manager to the next, you know, it, there's a lot of ramp up. So from my perspective, it's mitigating risk. If we make some concessions on what we thought that assistant district manager was in the past, I think it's, it's perfectly acceptable during this time period. My sense of urgency to do this today is simply in order to start the transition process. So Chris can continue to um identify what he needs to transition, uh knowledge shared to Laura, start assuming that role. Then we can focus our attention on getting the right district manager with the right skill set and do our due diligence because it's probably gonna take, I'd say, three to six months realistically for us to find one, even if we have a headhunter. Now, we could probably do it in sixty days because we can, if we do it in a retained environment, we can hold people account, the, an agency accountable to fill it within sixty days. But it's gonna be difficult to find someone and we're probably gonna have to pay a little bit more than what we thought we were today. And then we can also in parallel work, which is not as critical, but to get her back though. So I think she can assume, you know.
Let's move on your motion.
You can also go and get a headhunter to see if they can find somebody that'll come in on an interim basis too. That's very possible, very possible. It's, uh, so I think there's a whole bunch of options. I don't think we need to jump to the, the deal. Having her go in, work with Chris over the next thirty days, I have absolutely no problem with. But that's it. That's it. I'm not ready to go.
Bill, do you have, uh, do you have input?
I think we had a vote on your motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Uh I will.
Yeah, read the motion.
So the motion is uh to promote Laura to the assistant district manager role.
And that's immediately?
That's immediately.
Okay.
Uh upon uh Chris's vacancy, she will assume the interim manager for the duration of that period until the position is, is filled. And we would adjust her compensation from her existing range to eighty-five, which is within the eighty-two.
With seventy to ninety-five.
Seventy to ninety-five was the uh, uh was the range. So uh.
So the only thing we're voting for is promoting Laura right now at this time.
Promoting Laura.
And then, then they can her interim on his lead direct.
Well, we gotta have somebody.
I mean, that's.
We have to have a district manager.
The assistant district manager.
On the thirtieth day. That doesn't have to be made right now.
Okay. Well, then delete that part.
Okay, so I'll, I'll retract the, the interim district manager. We'll, we'll, we'll do that at the point of vacancy.
And that makes sense to do that, but right now it's not complicated.
All right, so I've got a motion and a second. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, you guys have to work together and uh and get us in a good position.
Something new.
Are we gonna make a motion to go for the?
So I have a changing. Yeah, I'll make the motion. So then we retain a headhunter immediately to start two things. One, trying to find someone that can fill in on the district management position until we find a candidate. I agree with you. It, it isn't gonna happen overnight. Uh I, I would hope though that you can do it within, within ninety days.
I'll second your motion.
And then also, if I can add to it.
Do you want to open that for poll comment?
Are we gonna use a headhunter to backfill Laura?
No, we don't, we don't need for that. No, no, we don't need that.
Okay.
All right, so one, one second. Okay, so if we, what we need for discussion, I've got a motion second. I'll get you in one second. Um if we go out to agency, we also need to set a threshold for spend. So at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars at a twenty-five percent fee, you're looking at about thirty thousand that we would spend for an agency. Now, we can probably negotiate that rate down maybe to twenty. But we have to, I mean, that's the going rate for, for an agency.
Well, we don't want to get in the bargain basement agency if we want some good candidates.
Yeah, and I can help identify uh.
Okay.
And we can, we can reach out to some, we can reach out to some other people, but we can have a couple recommendations. But we need to set a threshold on the amount. Uh if we say not to exceed thirty thousand, but, and that's, that's just at a contingent fee of, well, could be at a contingent fee of twenty-five percent, or we do it right, what I would recommend, well, as an option is to maybe retain someone because then we could hold them to a timeframe of sixty days. No, I mean, like, we would hold them to, we need this position filled in, in sixty days and then you go a third and a third and a third, whatever. That's where, that's the only way that I think we're gonna be able to set a timing threshold. So if you go retained, you, and the fee is, let's say, thirty thousand, you would pay a third at the, at the initiation of start. You pay a third at shortlist, so five candidates, and then you pay a third when we finally make final selection. You only have two options. You can go retain, which is what I just outlined, or you can go contingent, where you might even have two firms working on it and whichever one places the candidate, you're gonna pay them a twenty percent fee or twenty-five percent. What you lose there is timing consideration because you, you, you might say, I need this filled within sixty days, but it's harder to hold. Uh if it's contingent, agencies aren't going to commit to a time unless you retain them and pay them, you know, some course no problem.
Well, I, I think the thing that you're going, where you're gonna run the problem, I've been told, talking to De Cerbo and some of the others, is that the salary is what's going to attract. Right now, the district managers, as I indicated at the last meetings, hundred and sixty-five to hundred and eighty thousand on these.
Well, and that's where part of retaining, yeah, part of retaining.
Big difference.
Part of retaining the agency or just even whether it's contingent or retained is we would want to get input from that agency who has some specialization. So they might come in three weeks into the search. We can say our range is this. They can come back and say, you know, based on what our findings, you are thirty percent below market and you need to readjust, you know, in order to get.
Okay, that's reasonable.
So what we need to agree upon is, what I would say is a not-to-exceed amount of thirty thousand dollars at this point to, uh, to uh, to identify or engage an agency in, in the search. And then if we need to adjust, you know, the range based on their, their feedback or what the market's gonna yield. Because I'm telling you right now, just based on my experience, for positions really across the industry, it's about twenty or thirty percent higher today to hire people at various roles across industries than it was a year ago. Just doing.
I totally agree. I agree.
Yeah, so I don't disagree. Yes, Tony, sorry.
Just a point, I would suggest that the motion be to authorize the chairman and possibly if you want to work with myself to identify firms, recruiting firms, bringing that back to the board at the next board meeting within the parameters that you've mentioned. I mean, there are a couple that are familiar with Southwest Florida. I'm looking at one, for example. I don't, I don't interact with them at all. I mean, I've just seen them operate for other local governments. Uh and then have those brought back to the board at the next board meeting.
We need to lose two weeks? I mean, we should know with the recruiting firm.
I can, yeah, I just, I would think that we would be able to get somebody uh and not lose two weeks.
Yeah, I think between, and if anyone has input, funnel it through Laura.
Well, this is your, this is your area of expertise.
I mean, I can get a couple agencies, but.
I don't know anybody.
But as far as like, my specialization is not necessarily in municipalities and in government, so.
Yeah, and there's different parameters. The only reason I say that is the local government executive recruiters know how to handle the sunshine law and public records law aspect.
Yeah.
They're well versed in as to what point in time documents become public records or which.
I just don't want to wait to two weeks. You guys figure out what.
I think Laura's gonna be quarterbacking this, so I think you'll put some feelers out. And Chris has, you know, been very open with, hey, if he has some avenues, you know, to look down. And I think it's called Joe and some others. Uh to your point, we shouldn't wait for two weeks to get, to get started on this. Because we're gonna have to have an intake session. You're gonna have to identify, it might be whether it's one firm or you go with two. You're gonna have to have an intake session, give them all your parameters. They're gonna have to do some research. So it's gonna take us probably two or three weeks just to get things kicked off.
Get scrambling on it. Okay.
Okay.
But we're not the only ones that's ever done this for district management type stuff. That would be the first thing you do is just give Joe De Cerbo a call and say, Joe, do you have somebody that's a headhunter that does this?
Yeah, or one of your other, one of the other district managers that you, that you work with.
Public Works Journal, which has classified, which is people in that area. I mean, the ads aren't cheap, you know, five, six hundred dollars to just put an ad in that journal and get the word out to that entire audience.
Should have a better.
Yep.
I agree. That's, that's, that's what we need to hit.
And FASC, put it right on their website for free.
And so I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a second motion with the Kenny one. I think we can go ahead and knock that one out today too. But I, I make the motion to promote Kenny to a utilities director and also modifying his salary uh to what I think is comparable or at least in line with the assistant district manager, which would be eighty-five K as well, which he is currently.
Seventy.
You making that motion?
I am.
Seventy-nine and four.
Motion second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And congratulations Kenny for just everything that you do. Um just a small gesture. But part of that, and I think you have to accept it, but um is really help, helping in with, with Laura in the transition and stepping up, you know, which I, you would have probably done anyway, but this is just a way for us to.
Help Chris back and move and whatever.
So um. And I, and it's forced backfill. You need just maybe start drafting based on Chris's input, what that role should be modified to, and then bring that back at the next board meeting.
I will.
And approve it and we'll get it posted.
Okay.
Um so, okay, I'm gonna go over here to Bob. Any additional supervisor comments from you?
Yeah, I got a note or a letter from email from Cheryl Brophy wanting us to do something on the three openings within the Stony Brook Board. Did we ever resolve that one way or another?
I pushed something out and I think Joe left, but I did send an email to just.
I can.
Confirm that there's supposed to be eleven.
I can chime in on that a little bit. There was extensive discussion and I know Marilyn will hear this, so she'll agree with me because Brian wasn't at the board meeting yesterday or their committee meeting. I sat in on it. They talked for about twenty minutes and they're coming back with a recommendation for a smaller size. They wanted to have a minimum of, I don't remember if they landed on three or five, but a maximum of seven people on their committee, which would mean that they don't have, they have one opening and they have six people.
What I would push back is if they're gonna make modifications, they need to land on a number.
They're gonna bring them to you.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is it's no three to five or five to seven.
Yeah, there was a lot of discussion, so.
If they're gonna mark, and it's eleven is what they have today?
That was what the resolution was, eleven. No, the resolution says they're supposed to have eleven.
Right.
And that's, that's a lot.
Change, they need to come back. We're changing it from eleven to five or eleven to three.
They talked about that yesterday too.
Because I'm not gonna, yeah, I don't think it's pertinent for us to give a range when it comes to the advisory committee.
Right, and I believe there were some other changes, like I came in halfway through the meeting yesterday, but. There were some other minor changes. Minor changes they're gonna bring to us for recommendation as well, so.
Well, all I guess I'm asking is try to close the loop on this. Let her bring forth their recommendations of their board. If it's a new number, so be it. If it's gonna go to, if they have openings, who are they gonna recommend?
So can we ask uh Stony Brook to at the next meeting, put this on their agenda so they can come to us at our next meeting with their proposed resolution?
We want to support them.
My, we want to support it.
It's the same thing we would do with P-PAC. If they brought a resolution, we want to make sure P-PAC was behind it.
Yeah, they're making edits.
Them?
They are.
Well, they started meeting because of a.
They do, yeah.
Because of the head openings that were unbilled. That's what started all of this.
But that's not something we, we, we would have to agree that.
Well, that was they asked us to.
Yeah.
I, I believe.
We, well, we, we.
I believe the resolution establishing the committee established the.
At eleven, yeah. The resolution is that it's supposed to have eleven people on it.
So that would need to be revised.
Right, and that they're.
I'm getting, the way I read it was is that uh this was a uh, a social thing that people were being omitted from the committee and that's why they want to reduce it so they don't have to put those people on.
I think more of it was that they're having a hard time getting the eleven, but.
I'm getting a lot of mixed reviews and I don't know exactly what's driving.
I don't know either, but I, I, I don't think that's an us problem. The ball's, the ball's at their part.
Yes, they made changes to it. They're gonna bring it back to their October sixth meeting and then they'll be able to bring something to the board after that.
Actually, we need is to get in the middle of that, that fight.
I live there. I don't want to.
Doug said, I'm not gonna start any trouble, but Doug said, that's all I've got.
Some of us take.
Yeah, I've got several things. Capital Reserve, uh we need to get on that. I sent to Chris a company named Reserve Advisors, sent him all kinds of information. It's about the one was recommended by uh Russ Wire.
Is the Capital Reserve study?
Yeah, Capital Reserve study. We need to get on that and get firms identified. Uh most of the firms that are doing this, they are not uh, in my opinion, trained to be able to do it for something like our district. HOAs and condominium associations, whole different ballgame. We're much bigger than that. We need to get that study done. Second thing is, uh Bob had asked for a couple of weeks ago, a couple of meetings ago, this ponds uh spreadsheet. Uh I know Elle's working on it. Uh Stephen has provided me with information. I've got some additional columns to put in it, Bob, because you had said, I want to know what these lakes are. We need to know what the lake number is and our designation, but we need to know what these South Florida water managements designation is. Gotta have the same thing, where it's at, what basin it flows in and all that type of stuff. And then uh Stephen has given me the ponds that have been worked on, what the lineal footage of worked-on area was and the price in the contract. I think all that needs to go on there, so.
Lineal footage and acreage water rate.
Yeah, what I have not been able to figure out is Elle's spreadsheet, how you take this thing and I'm, I'm envisioning this being on a twenty-four by thirty-six inch sheet paper, real quick, like. That's Elle's right now and I've already added ten more columns.
Yeah.
So we need to find out a way that we, when we do this and we print it, it can be on a usable document on like a twenty-four by thirty-six inch engineering document. But what I've been trying to figure out is how you take and go into Elle's document and spread these columns because I don't want the descriptions of the basins down here when it needs to be over here so we can go straight across with all the issues.
Correct.
That's, so that's an issue.
But she has a lot of D O information, other things that really we won't need per se.
Well, I'm thinking, let's get the stuff and divide it into categories like aeration, laterals and.
Bank replenishment.
Replenishment and have them some.
Well, so let me ask you, it, how, because what, what I'm perceiving is, it's, it's this spreadsheet with multiple filters and, and information that's there, but you're saying you need it to be printable?
Well, I think it's, you, this thing, if you put it. Well, I think it's, this thing, if you put it on one sheet, you're gonna need a magnifying glass to read.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
So I think what I would probably look at, and I could look at just maybe a better format with the information that you need, but then you need to be able to have a printable view.
Well, I'll go along with what Bob said, is if you take and have on the left-hand side the basic information, and then have three different columns, three different sets of columns that do provide.
Take a look, I can take a look at the spreadsheet.
The way we represented in Pelican, the first, I believe, the first is a pond number. The second is linear footage. The third is pond acreage. The next column is the basin. The next column is the provider. Then whether it has aeration or doesn't, and if it has aeration, how many diffusers, how many, and then the next column is, do we have bathymetrics? When was it done? So it's that kind of a document that.
Have you seen this one?
Yeah, it's got a lot of information. Yeah, I'll send you.
Send me yours, and.
I'll send you what I got.
Or at least have L send it to me.
I'll send it to Laura, she can send it to everybody.
Then the next thing is, did we get a date set for that workshop on the next deal on bathymetric and aeration?
For the ponds. The ponds. We want to do that on the sixteenth, so the next meeting.
It is on the next.
Yeah, I'll have it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Do we have, who is going to be the vendor that we're using to do this, once we determine at that meeting what our strategy is for doing the bathymetrics? Who are we going to to do the work? I don't want to wait another two to three weeks after that. I'd hope that when you come to the meeting on the sixteenth, somebody is.
We have a bathymetric.
We have a bathymetric, bathymetric, a bathymetric, one or two firms that know what they're doing on this.
Do we have that, Chris? Do we have someone?
I think Brian has someone invited to meet.
Hey, he has somebody. I have another firm. We can just ask them for a quote to do the work.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I said, yeah, I have another firm, too, that they specialize out there. They're over on the East Coast, but they work over here all the time, and that's what they do. And they also use P E's and P L S.
Well, I want somebody that uses GPS to do the data, because we, remember that fiasco we did up there on your lake? That was a frickin' joke. You would have thought that we did three different lakes. Well, on Pluto, one on Neptune, and one on Mars.
Yeah, it was.
I mean, the data was totally off. One would say it was eight foot deep, and the other one says sixteen. So we gotta have somebody.
Being quiet about who the Pelican used.
So we gotta have somebody that knows what they're doing.
Have a couple options.
Okay, so for the sixteenth, then that'll work on that. Where are we at on Daniel's Preserve? We've got high tides right now. We're lucky we didn't get hit by a rain event or a tropical storm. That water has no place to go. Where are we at on that forty-eight inch pipe that's full?
I have to ask Brian and Rick, and I think he was actually waiting till October first to start it, because of the budget and the amount of money we were gonna spend.
And what do we explain to the people that we knew about it, and if it backs up into their houses and we knew about it, and we worried about budget?
I'll ask Brian about that tomorrow.
Do they get wet in normal?
Do what?
Did those homes get.
Everybody got wet. Everybody, no, we didn't get home. The only place we got homes was down there by your neck in the woods. We didn't get home. We were close here. We were right up the house.
Close to the guts, like where she's.
But anyway, so we'll check on that. We already talked about the management position deal on spreadsheet. Park survey, where are we at on issuing out for the public the results of the August twenty-second spreadsheet on the survey?
They are done. I just need, if you are ready for me to release them, I will do that.
I'd say, let's get them released.
Okay.
And if we're gonna continue to collect information, we collect information.
I closed it out effective the twenty-second.
I'm sorry?
I closed out the survey. It stopped being available as of the twenty-second.
Okay.
Yeah, I almost think we just need to keep it open for a while, but that's just, you know, because I, I think with so much stuff going on around the budget.
I think we need to do a different survey and rework it, so I'm not happy with the way this one went out, and I think it was confusing. I think we can rework it and make it easier for the public. I think we'll get better feedback.
I think we have to make some iterations. That's fine, because ultimately, I think we need more participation, so we truly understand.
Well, we've got more than enough to justify the deal, in my opinion, with the numbers. What I don't think, what we need is, we need to have a discussion of what necessitates a amenity that is attractive to a percentage. Is it twenty-five percent, thirty percent of the people, thirty-five, forty? What's the magic number?
You mean down to the specific items?
Here's where we're going right now.
Ex amount percentage of the population, what's that?
Yes, what I'm saying is, you go out right now, based upon what we've got, and you try to sell it as a package, this duck's not gonna fly. It's dead. The community doesn't want it. They don't want to spend that kind of money. But there are things, I believe, that are in that package that we could go out and implement, whether it be pickleball, or the amphitheater, or the trails, any one of those. My question is, what's the percentage that has to?
The bar.
Threshold? What's the threshold that we can go and do it?
If you're looking at twenty-five items that's on the a la carte menu.
Yes.
Any one of those items that hits twenty-five percent interest.
Or a number.
Makes the cut.
Well, we gotta pick a number.
Or at least makes the cut. Now, there's some things that might just be, you know, you know, whatever, but I think.
Jump on the low-hanging fruit, the easy star.
Or, or what people want, so there's no point in putting horseshoe pits in if no one wants horseshoe pits.
That's exactly right.
We talked about the boat dock for the model boats.
Right.
That's a, that's a simple thing to do, build a bulkhead or whatever you said we were gonna do. I don't know if we start.
Yeah, there's two costs versus benefits.
Simple things.
But if we would, if we would, whether it's twenty-five percent, thirty-three percent, thirty-five percent, we're not gonna get anything. Those numbers that we got back, there was nothing.
Well, and also.
Close to thirty-five percent.
Be tied to cost.
Oh.
Because if, if I've got an item that's five hundred thousand on its own, and another one that's twenty thousand, I almost need to have more than a twenty-five percent, you know, in order to justify a cost of.
Don't go down that road. Don't go down that road. I wouldn't do that way. You already do that. Do that dog out with the pool. We aren't even close to twenty-five percent. We're at sixteen percent.
But if you're going to, well, okay, we can see where the numbers come back with it.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying.
But we've already given people the numbers, so they knew the numbers when they said they wanted the things they wanted. So we can, we can work with that, but.
We also use, cultivate the precedence group to generally also, but interest and feedback. Got to use that.
There is stuff, there are things that I believe that we can do. In my opinion, this is not a hell no or a hell yes. There's maybe a hell half, yes half, no.
Well.
In other words, there are things that we can do with funds and this possibility, but we've got to be somewhat seeing that it's not for a select few.
Yeah, we have to.
It just doesn't make sense.
Another hell no, hell yes.
Yeah, that, now that is a hell no or a hell yes.
Okay. All right.
That's all I.
That's all, yeah, okay. Bobby?
I just have two things. So on the sixteen, we're having the workshop for the ponds and all that, and it's also around that time that the report from the arborist is due. Is he gonna be presenting that at that meeting, too?
Um, I don't know. I think there was a COVID issue with the arborist recently.
It was mine. I think that, I thought Brian said that he was supposed to have that report maybe by the eleven, which is actually past the cutoff date to get it into the meeting for the sixteenth, but I could get it into the first one in October, which would be on the seventh.
What's this for?
The arborist. The arborist report for Gateway, where they brought in the three arborists to go through the entire all of Gateway.
A whole community or just the north end?
Not the whole community.
I think that has to be a separate meeting.
I agree.
Yeah.
I think your sixteen meeting is.
Ponds and trees.
Yeah, no, I think we should.
Throw in parks, and you've got them all.
Okay, and I know that the vendor that is bringing us this report is a vendor that we're working with. I was kind of concerned that we, personal touch is the one that's gonna bring up this report, and that's also the part of the contract that they take care of it.
So then it might be a potential conflict of interest?
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, I did not know. I don't think none of us knew.
So we're hiring an arborist that's going to be bidding on the work that we did?
Already great.
Yeah, already does.
Already great.
You don't do that.
Already great.
So I don't know.
There's three of them that are working on the report.
Oh, there's three, there's three different arborists.
Yeah, from three different companies? Okay, all right, that's, that's better.
He's just one of them.
So I'm okay with that. If you've got three separate arborists from three separate entities, and one of them happens to have an established relationship, I'm okay with that, because that might actually not be it.
And they're really focusing on what the condition is of the trees, the longevity, not damaging them, what about the age of the oaks? You know, giving an assessment of the oak trees as a resource.
Is he looking also at the lumen counts on Gateway Boulevard with the trees?
Yes.
He's looking at that.
They're looking at all the right trees, right, you know, right plants, right place, all of that.
Okay, I want to make sure we're clear. We're gonna have one report? We're gonna have three reports?
It's one report that the three arborists are working on together.
Okay, and the two other arborists were hired by personal touch, so it's the same thing, Doug. So, yeah, so there are three separate arborists, but.
Well, let's just see what it comes back.
But by the same vendor that we are.
We can't walk it back now.
Yeah, I just think going forward, I don't think that's.
I don't know if the arborist report would, I don't know if that would really influence their scope of work.
Yeah, because that's all they do.
More removal.
What you're wanting is an independent arborist that's not gonna bid on the work.
But I'm saying, there's, you know, we can't walk it back.
Just going forward.
There's some risk, but.
Yeah.
Check the work product. I think, I think you'll find it more informative, and it's not really work-derived, like, you know, here we can do this and that. It's more like, here's your resource. This is what you can do. Will the trees survive the root printing? How much will they survive?
And depending on whatever option you go with, here's the.
If it's a tree thirty years old, is it gonna die in three years anyway?
Okay, all right. So I have that, and then I just have, I have to say the mainscape from all this stuff that I've been sending out, they have, I feel like they have
Stepped up?
A little bit. I really do, in regards to communication. I have seen an increase in communication between all the staff and mainscape, and also the work out there.
How about, I know we were, one of those issues was just our internal staff checklist and our oversight on the staff side, if you noticed.
We had, I don't think staff was working during the whole last two weeks or three weeks, because there was some sick time and then some time out. So I think there's still an opportunity there, but I have seen an increase on that. I do want to bring something else in regards to personal touch. I forwarded you guys all an email with pictures, and I put the not reply. I replied to personal touch in regards to this. When I started questioning Jim in regards to the palm tree trimming, why they were not done, he reached out to personal touch, and Eric said, they will be there every Friday, sometimes on Thursdays, weather permitting. Well, they were here three times, and from the three times that they were here, MOT, we had, staff had to call them and say, you gotta come out here again. There's tree trims on the, on the road. There were literally people walking on the sidewalk while they're trimming, and tree limbs are falling.
This is personal touch.
Personal touch. So, so I told Jim, I said, I need you to get with Rob, and I need you to tell them, I need him to follow the contract. I want MOT all the time that he's doing this work. The sidewalk needs to be closed, and if he's the one that told us he's gonna be here every Friday, as long as his weather permits, I need him to be here every Friday, or he needs to communicate with you, why is he not here? Because he had sixty-three done, that's, you know, he's not gonna get it all done on this space. So he reached out to him, and Rob responded to the email. I was quite shocked, and pretty much in summary was, yeah, we didn't do the MOT, but here's a picture of mainscape, the Lee County, and everybody else, all the other vendors are also not doing it, and we're really trying to buy materials to make, you know, Gateway happy and stuff. It's not about making us happy, it's about following the contract.
Good job.
So I, you're not making me, you're not doing me a favor.
Termination for convenience, or what kind of termination?
Typically, we do.
Yeah, there's a clause.
I would say at this point, if there are certain things that are not being done, it's not held by our standard, I would let Rob know. If it doesn't, if things don't change in the next two weeks, we're gonna terminate.
But what I would suggest also, there's language in the contract as to putting minorities.
There's.
For each, yeah. And also you can hold monies back for work that's not performed properly.
But I would.
You have to hire somebody else. And also, there's a cure period in there. I can't recall what the cure period is. We have to double check that.
Who's our liaison with him on the work he's doing?
Jim.
Jim.
What's sleep switch?
So I.
Rattlee's cage.
Yeah.
That report's up to Brian.
And I have been, I mean, I feel like I'm almost overwhelming, but I'm going out there.
Well, you shouldn't be having to do Jim's job.
Well, and that's how I feel like it. I literally, I took a picture for every time that they were trimming the trees, because we don't have an arborist there when they're trimming, and that's what it says in the contract. We don't have, you know, and it's not done, like, you know, we had that gentleman from Bristol Park complaining of how they were done. Now, the, after that complaint, they're, they're getting trimmed as I think they should, but I just, I just feel like it's almost like it's not important to them, and so if we need to give them a written formal notice that the contract is, you know, I think it's the time, because four months down the road.
They're probably not used, and they're watching. Probably used.
Probably.
They just get the contract, they do what they want to do.
Rob lives in this community.
Okay.
And if nothing else, he should be overseeing, you know.
I don't even know who he is.
Rob Eisner.
But your point is, well, we hadn't said anything with the ponds until they got on board, that we're watching.
And I think Chris had mentioned when we had the meeting with mainscape, and I think that was really helpful. They're both Eric's also person with Eric. I think that helped, and I think if that's what we need to do, we need to give them formal notice that, listen, you need to follow those talks, not every time that you're here, not one week, when I complain or not, and then maybe have a meeting. Yeah, it's, but the way he wrote the email, it's like, I'm actually, he actually wrote, I'm trying to buy materials, which I'm assuming he's referring to signs, cones, which actually the cones that they're using, I'm pretty sure there is a requirement. The cones are this tall. There's the one they use for soccer. I don't think those even meet the requirement. And we pay, they're, I think, the only company that we pay for the MOT under the contract, and they still don't do it. So we pay for the supply, they're still buying the supply, they don't do it. I just, it's a mess. It's embarrassing. That's how I feel. That's all I have.
All right, Mr. Guy.
I have nothing.
He said he had nothing.
Nothing, okay. Again, great meeting today. I will call the meeting adjourned at five forty-six. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.